Trish Elglies, Assistant City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, October 6, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for October 6, 2025. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there's any public input on the item that they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can go to meeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by the name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's website at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for tonight's session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh
Here.
Council members Farber
Here.
Jones
Here.
Resnick
Here.
Rousseau
Here.
Sprank
Here.
Wethel
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell
Here.
Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Trish. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first presentation this evening is Mayor of the Year Award Recognition.
All right, and I believe we have Alan Kemp here with us this evening.
Good evening. I'm Alan Kemp. I'm the Executive Director for the Iowa League of Cities. So it's an honor and a pleasure to attend this Dubuque City Council meeting and recognize Mayor Brad Kavanaugh, this year's Mayor of the Year Award winner, for a city with a population over 10,000. A mayor is a leader whose service, vision, and dedication make a genuine difference in their city as well as cities across the state. And in this case, Mayor Kavanaugh provided excellent leadership just last year as the president of the Iowa League of Cities. The Iowa Mayors Association Mayor of the Year Award exists to recognize a mayor who has rendered extraordinary public service, not only to their own community but to the broader network of cities, and in advancing the cause of municipal government across the state. Recipient selections made on the basis of services rendered within the community, but they also include throughout the state of Iowa through the service to the Iowa Mayors Association and the Iowa League of Cities. Recognizing the unique duties of a mayor in a city of various sizes, the Iowa Mayors Association just last year decided to differentiate between populations. And so they recognize a mayor from a city with a population 2,000 and less, a mayor with a population 2,000 to 10,000, and then 10,000 and over. And so individuals are nominated for this award by members of the league, by members of the Mayors Association, the Iowa City County Management Association, IMFOA. And what ends up happening is the nominations are submitted and the Iowa Mayors Association Executive Committee takes a look at those, and they will go ahead and make the decision on who should be a recipient. So Mayor Kavanaugh was elected mayor of Dubuque in November of 2021, just after serving on the City Council beginning in November of 2019, a relatively short period of time. Although the mayoral position in Dubuque is technically part-time, like every city, such a position is truly a full-time calling. It's for mayors like him that consistently step forward with leadership, offering bold ideas, and persistent follow-through. So based on his application that was submitted, Mayor Kavanaugh was distinguished himself in several key areas. One, statewide leadership and advocacy. Over the past year, he served as president of the Iowa League of Cities, leading statewide and federal conversations, forming partnerships at both the state and national capital, and advocating for cities across the state of Iowa. He developed the leading Iowa Good Government in Iowa podcast. This outreach tool shines a spotlight on the best practices and success stories with Iowa cities. Mayor Kavanaugh co-hosted this series with David Martin, interviewing city officials from all over the state. Transparency and engagement. He launched a video series delivering to Dubuque with Mayor Kavanaugh, giving residents behind-the-scenes look at its city investments, public improvements, and government operations. The league has encouraged such outreach from all of its members, and this video series provided an excellent example for others to follow. And finally, strategic and pragmatic leadership. His reputation among peers as a gifted speaker, strategic thinker, and problem solver is one of the reasons he was selected for this honor. In short, the Iowa Mayors Association felt Mayor Kavanaugh, along with Mayor Phil Psychogen from Messina, and Mayor Kevin Van Otterloo of Rock Valley, in their own unique ways, embodied the very qualities this award seeks to celebrate: Commitment, courage, insight, and service. By honoring Mayor Kavanaugh, we celebrate not only one individual but also the city of Dubuque and its model of civil partnership, forward-thinking, and citizen engagement. His work demonstrates how a city can steward growth responsibly, maintain accountability, and keep humanity at the heart of governance. The award also signals to every mayor in Iowa that leadership rooted in integrity and connection, not just the loudest voice, is what builds a lasting impact. So it's my privilege as the Executive Director of the Iowa League of Cities, but more importantly, as the Secretary of the Iowa Mayors Association, to recognize Brad Kavanaugh as mayor of Dubuque for the 2025 Iowa Mayors Association Mayor of the Year for a population over 10,000. So please join me in congratulating him for his recognition by his peers and those that attended the Iowa League of Cities Annual Conference and Exhibit just a few weeks ago. Mayor, congratulations.
Thank you. That's very kind. Thank you very much. And Alan, thanks so much for making the trip from Des Moines to be able to present this. We've gotten to know Alan really well as the President of the league, working closely with him. He does an incredible job as Executive Director of the Iowa League of Cities, and thank you very much for your leadership in that. I sincerely appreciate this. I actually called the league when I received the email, and I said, "Seriously?" I was a little bit surprised, more than a little bit surprised, but very, very honored to receive this. And it's one thing, you know, it always feels good to be recognized, of course, but to be recognized by other people who are doing the same job throughout the state is something that I think is unique. And it is a unique position, the position of mayor. You're the only one in town. So it's one of those things, and it's great to have other mayors that see that as well. I'm really proud of the work that we've done on this council. I just want to make that really clear. Proud of the work we've done. I'm proud of our staff and the things that happened in Dubuque. Really proud of the work that's been done at the state level by the League of Cities, too. So I think there's a lot of great people doing a lot of good things, and it's been great to lift that up and highlight that a little bit, too, just to show people that there are good people out there who just want to do good stuff, and they're running for local office. And I really appreciate that. So thank you very much, Alan.
Our second presentation is the 2025 Rising Star Award Recognition.
All right, we have Megan Gloss here from the Telegraph Herald.
Yes, shouldn't we begin all meetings with giving so many awards away? It's so great. My name is Megan Gloss. I'm the Features Editor of the Telegraph Herald, also the editor of businesstimes.biz. It's a monthly publication that focuses on business in the tri-state area. And since 2003, we have been honoring 12 different recipients every single year, ages 35 and under, with a Rising Star Award. This award symbolizes or signifies individuals that have been nominated by their peers and other leaders throughout the community, and vetted by a panel that we've selected that kind of look at different things like leadership, community involvement, and people that we've really identified as having bigger and better things to come, that are already outstanding in their field and already doing wonderful things in the community, but people that we think really have a lot more to come and a lot more to offer the community as they continue growing in their career. Something beautiful that Amy Gilligan shared during our presentation a couple of weeks ago of each of these 12 awards was, "We're in a generation now that's really incredible." Her generation, she said, "It was really about having it all in terms of career and family, but this generation is saying, you know, that's not enough. We have to give back. We have to show up. We have to be out there in the community doing things." And that's been really beautifully represented. So I'm very excited tonight to be able to honor Antonio Mouzane with the Multicultural Family Center, and I believe we have a brief video to share as well.
The ask is, "What do I have to do?" I would challenge us to reframe that question to, "Who do I have to become?"
He's the epitome of, "Push the right student along, and you might end up pushing the president."
If you've ever emailed Antonio, he's got this quote at the very end of his signature. "Look at a man as he is, and he only becomes worse. But if you look at him as what he could be, he becomes what he should be."
Antonio is a very strong facilitator.
Who can facilitate the desire of people to see themselves as one.
It's not about the spotlight.
And by putting him in that position, we grew in three positions. We got Community Impact Director, we got a director, and we got an assistant director. That took a while for us to get to that, to get to that level. But I think we're balanced enough now that we see what we're capable of doing.
He has such a strong vocation, a sense of calling, a sense of purpose.
It's important, as a community, that we are very self-aware of our strengths. That requires all of us to do something very uniquely different in order to fill that role.
It's a wonderful philosophy to have. "I'm about the team and not about being number one."
Wherever he goes, he's positively impacting people just through his presence but also his commitments.
You know, my high school football coach was a typical coach, short shorts, buzz cut, you know, big school guy, baby blue eyes, hoodie. He wore glasses everywhere, even when he was teaching history class. You didn't see him smile too often. He was always yelling. And I remember running up to him outside. We were on the field. We just wore our hats with our class, and I got my hat, and I ran to everyone, and I ran to coach. "Coach, Coach, I finally graduated. You were giving me crap this year, but I graduated. I'm the first in my family to graduate. Aren't you proud of me, Coach?" My coach took off his glasses, and he stared at me with those baby blue eyes, and it was the first time that I saw a grown male cry. It was the depth in which he connected to my spirit that gave me that, "Oh, my goodness. What I thought I was going to do after high school is completely different now because this is powerful."
That coach allowed for him to accept others as coaches, or mentors, or colleagues, and listen to what they can do to help him further advance what he's trying to do.
What I truly want to do, my vocation, my purpose, is to transform people's lives like this moment right here.
Because this coach gave him a desire and gave him a level of trust, a level of trust he probably wouldn't get in any other place.
And he comes in who he is, day in and day out, and he provides the same service to everyone. And he reminds them of who they are, who they can be.
I had an aneurysm in 2016. I came back to the community, and I'm slowly getting back into it. So I had a cane. Whatever I wore that day, I put a ribbon around it so my cane could match me. The first thing, when Antonio seen me, he just made a big deal about the cane, and so he took pictures. The last thing I want to do was carry a cane because, to me, that showed weakness. He made the cane relevant to me being bad. He didn't make it a crutch. And so he made me feel not like I was fragile.
Don't ever go away, Antonio. Stay here forever. Don't leave.
Please join me in congratulating Antonio Mouzane as one of our 2025 Rising Star recipients.
Thank you all so, so much. It is such an honor. Mike always says to us, "There's two very important days in a person's life: the day that they're born and the day that they find out why." And for me, life has always been this journey of me living in that why, of really pouring into people, families, and in this capacity, our community. And to be able to show my children, my family, I have to give a shout-out because I can't do anything without my wife. We got five kids, family of seven. Can we give a clap for her, too, please? This is a team effort, for sure. But to live in purpose is truly a blessing, and I'm grateful that I get to serve in our community, to help other people find their gifts and their purpose, so our community can truly continue to be great. So thank you again for the nomination to Ms. Kristen Deitch. Thank you for Liza, for her kind words, and Anthony, and the whole team that I get to work with to impact our community. So thank you so much.
Antonio, we're very proud of you. So thank you for everything that you do on a daily basis. Those are great stories to hear on that video, too. But there is something about you, you know, that presence, like being in your presence and having the honor of working with you, and seeing you interact with the community, and seeing you push us as a city council and push us as community members to try and be better. It's something special, and you're doing a great job of it. So keep it up. So thank you. And I want to thank the Telegraph Herald, too, for this award and making this award possible. I think it's one of those great opportunities to lift community members up every single year. So thank you for being so forward-looking in doing that. So we appreciate it. Thanks for being here, Megan.
Our third presentation tonight is recognition of Airport Commissioner for 30 years of service.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Sorry, Todd Dulcing, Airport Director. It's my honor to recognize Doug Brotherton. Doug Brotherton first learned to fly in 1969, when the Dubuque Airport advertised a chance to learn to fly for $500. Early on, Doug began flying with the local Key City Flying Club, which actually still exists today. He then purchased an aircraft, rented a teehanger, and logged thousands of hours flying family and friends. As a long-term member of the Dubuque EA Chapter 327, Doug has volunteered numerous hours towards educational and mentoring programs at events such as the Fly-In/Drive-In Breakfast and Young Eagles. For many years, Doug has made the annual pilgrimage to the Oshkosh AirVenture Fly-In. In 2022, after over 50 years of flying, Doug earned the distinguished Wright Brothers Master Pilot Award. Respect and admiration of fellow aviators, commissioners, staff, and aviation community, Doug has always stressed professionalism and safety from pre-flight to destination. Doug has been a longtime supporter and advocate of aviation at the Dubuque Regional Airport in the tri-state area. In July of 1995, Doug took the oath of office as Airport Commissioner. Over the last 30-plus years, Doug has served in all positions, including Airport Chair multiple times. Doug has helped guide the Dubuque Regional Airport staff through three Airport Master Plan development and implementation. Some of the notable projects during Doug's tenure as Airport Commissioner include, but are not limited to, and I had to condense this list, it would have gone on for pages, runway 36 extension, runway 1836 runway overlays, taxiway construction and modification, apron construction, airfield lighting and signage, safety area improvements, joint-use facility for airport operations and maintenance, snow removal equipment storage facility, aircraft rescue fire and snow removal equipment acquisitions, new AT air traffic control tower radar, new runway approaches, teehangers, bulk storage hangars, and various land acquisitions. The design, site work, and construction of the new 33,000-square-foot commercial passenger air service complex, including entrance road, parking lot, terminal, apron taxiways that opened in 2016, several non-aeronautical and aeronautical land leases, including the University of Dubuque Aviation Program, construction of their new 11,000-square-foot Babka Flight Center Training Campus, which opened in 2019, and currently, as you know, expanding the hangar, building, apron, and parking with over 500 flight students, instructors, and 30-plus airframes, including rotor and fixed wing. Most recent projects include solar ray project at the Cap Martin Terminal, new taxiway Alpha, and GA apron construction projects. Over the last 30 years, Doug has worked with airport staff to navigate through milestone challenges, such as recession, 9/11, when the nation was grounded for weeks, flatline windstorm that destroyed three hangars impacting multiple aircraft, and most recent, the global pandemic. Doug, working with fellow commissioners and staff over the years, has always found innovative ways to keep advancing the Dubuque Regional Airport and tri-state aviation. Thank you, Doug, for your 30-plus years of service.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the City Council for reappointing me, number about over four or six years, so I just kept working. Secondly, I'd like to state that I would encourage people in the community to volunteer to work for the city because it is a great experience to work for our city. You meet so many people that you would not otherwise meet, and it's really a great experience. Coming back to the working with people, though, it's been really fun and enjoyable to work with the City Council, with Mike Milligan, the manager, and his staff, and other leaders in our community, because we started out with working on a master plan. And so the idea was, here's the plan for the city of Dubuque and our airport. And the working through and accomplishing all of that is really great. And to do that, we had to work with everybody in the city. And because a lot of the airport managers I worked with were pretty new, I got to travel out of town to meet the federal administration people for funding, the DOT people for funding, people in other airports. And so I was on the road with the managers doing much of that, and that was a really experience for meeting some airport managers that I'm still in contact with. And so, you know, the other thing, I'm making mine pretty short because remember, three minutes, he was cutting me off. But anyway...
That was a joke, Doug, just to make that really clear.
Anyway, the other thing I'd mention is, I probably have worked with about five or six airport managers. I can't remember all, and I've been manager or chairperson for many of those. But I'm saving the best for last because our manager now, Todd Dulcing, is the best one I've had in my 30 years. Thank you.
Well, Doug, on behalf of all of us here in the City Council, thank you very much for your service and for so much of it for so long. I mean, I think it's helpful to have what I like to call institutional memory in some groups, you know, to make sure that you can think about the history and why things happened the way they did, why we are where we are now. I think that's a very helpful thing to have. And on the Airport Commission in particular, you've been that. So thank you very much for everything that you've done. It's been incredible work. So thanks, Doug.
Moving on to proclamations, our first proclamation tonight is Indigenous Peoples' Day, October 13, 2025.
All right, so I'm going to go with first names because I've got a long list here. So we've got Anne, Suzanne, Dave, Elizabeth, Sarah, and Lydia, I believe, with us tonight. So come on up. Feel free to say a few words before I read the proclamation.
I'm Sister Anne DiNicollo, and I'm a BVM sister. My address is 1040 Carmel Drive, Dubuque, Iowa. And thank you for the invitation to speak tonight, Mayor Kavanaugh. It's my lucky charge to speak on behalf of three congregations of sisters here in Dubuque. Over the past two years, the Sisters of Charity of the Blessed Virgin Mary, the Sisters of Presentation, and the Dubuque Sisters of St. Francis, and their respective associates, participated in the Land Justice Futures Program with congregations of women religious around the country. During this time, we became reacquainted with the 15th-century Papal Bulls, now known as the Doctrine of Discovery. Promoted by the Roman Catholic Church, these documents asserted and justified that Christian nations had the right to claim lands inhabited by non-Christians. European nations had the right to claim lands in America, based on their discovery, relegating Native Americans as mere occupants of a land without ownership rights. Later, upheld by the U.S. Supreme Court, this principle remains in effect today through federal, state, and municipal laws. We hope to embrace the invitation of Mary Ellen Baker, an elder of the Okeechobee tribe, to end the Doctrine of Discovery, and to partner with indigenous peoples and all who have suffered from this principle to build a new doctrine of unity. Our study led us to seek ways to make reparations for the dehumanizations suffered by our indigenous brothers and sisters. We are grateful to the City Council and the City of Dubuque, who join with us in deepening our understanding of the issues, expressing an openness to learning about the Native American culture, and acknowledging the injustices that continue to take place. We hope our collective efforts bring about a culture-changing pathway on which we think differently about property, land, and relationships. On behalf of the congregations of women religious in the city of Dubuque, we say thank you to the council and all in the city government for this proclamation and its efforts to right the wrongs of the past, and I thank you.
Thank you very much, Sister, for speaking to that. And thank you for constantly lifting up these important issues for us to be able to discuss as a community. I think you play that role so honorably, and you've done so for so long, and we appreciate it very much. So thank you. Thank you for being here tonight and accepting this proclamation and speaking to us.
Thank you.
City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of native nations to the International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas, as a commemoration of 500 years of survival and renewal of indigenous nations in the face of genocide and colonization. And whereas a growing number of cities and towns in the United States have recognized the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day as an opportunity to celebrate indigenous heritage and resiliency. And whereas the City of Dubuque recognizes that the indigenous peoples of this hemisphere have lived in these lands since time immemorial, and that Dubuque itself was built upon the homelands of the Iowai, Ho-Chunk, Sioux, Miskwaki, Kikapu, Miami, and other indigenous peoples of this region, and acknowledges and honors these members of the community. And whereas the City of Dubuque recognizes the historic, cultural, and contemporary significance of the indigenous peoples of the lands that also became known as the Americas. And whereas the City of Dubuque desires to support the struggles of indigenous nations for social and environmental justice, religious freedom, tribal sovereignty, and equity. And whereas the City of Dubuque seeks to bring greater understanding to the people of Dubuque regarding indigenous cultures and the enormous contributions they have made and continue to make to our nation. Now, therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 13th of October, 2025, as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Oh, we got a picture. The camera's coming, Dave. You want to get in the picture? Nice try, though. Thank you, Alan. Thank you all. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is Trick or Treat Night, October 31st, 2025.
All right, and I will accept this proclamation on behalf of everyone here in Dubuque, especially of the children of here in Dubuque. So, City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas cornstalks, pumpkins, and gold, and a golden moon will herald the cool weather of autumn and the entertaining holiday of Halloween. And whereas Halloween is a fun time of year when young and old become creative and emerges ghosts, devils, witches, cartoon characters, superheroes, and more. And whereas all manner of delightful costumed individuals go from house to house on their annual journey for candy and treats, announcing their arrival with a hearty trick-or-treat. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim Friday, October 31st, 2025, as Trick or Treat Night during the hours of 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and urge all motorists to be watchful of our youngsters making their annual rounds. Thank you, Trish.
Okay, we'll move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there's any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there's any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration. Consent items can be found on pages one through five of tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Trish. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Okay. All right. And with no items being room, back to the table then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprang.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next are items to be set for public hearing. We have six items tonight. First is proposed development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and Hitsler Rental LLC, providing, uh, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement and setting a public hearing for October 20th, 2025. Second is proposed development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and Ned Oberlachting, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement, setting a public hearing for October 20th, 2025. Third is proposed development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and 1248 Iowa Street LLC, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement, setting a public hearing for October 20th, 2025. Fourth is Eagle Point Water Treatment Plant Roof Rehabilitation Project, initiate public bidding and setting a public hearing for October 20th, 2025. Fifth is fiscal year 2026 first budget amendment and setting a public hearing for October 20th, 2025. And sixth is Comiskey Park Environmental Covenant and set public, and set a public hearing for October 20th, 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for October 20th, 2025.
Second by Sprang.
Got a motion by Rousell, second by Sprang. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprang.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next are boards and commission appointments for the Airport Commission, Civil Service Commission, and the Investment and Cash Management Oversight Advisory Commission.
All right, thank you, Trish. We have the Airport Commission first, so here we have one four-year term through September 14th, 2029, and one applicant, Ron Vaughn, so I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that Ron Vaughn be appointed to the Airport Commission.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprang.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Next up, we have the Civil Service Commission. So if you recall, um, this is a mayoral, um, selection, and then with concurrence of the councils. So there are two four-year terms here through April 6th, 2027. A few weeks ago, on August 18th, I identified Julie Bakkenstedt and Otto Kruger as the two applicants that I would like to select and appoint. Um, I guess, um, would it be most appropriate to do these separately, Krena? Trying to remember. It might be cleaner and easier.
It would be cleaner and easier to do it that way.
Let's do that. So I would entertain a motion, um, for the first applicant, Julie Bakkenstedt, please.
Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that the council affirm the mayor's appointment of Julie Bakkenstedt to the Civil Service Commission.
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Resnick. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprang.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. I'll entertain a second motion for Otto Kruger, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that the City Council sustain the mayor's selection of Otto Kruger to appoint to the Civil Service Commission.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Rousell. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprang.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next on the agenda are public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing that you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state, uh, your question or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is Water System Improvements 2024 North English Road Water Main Extension Project, Public Hearing, State Revolving Fund Loan Environmental Review.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprang.
Got a motion by Rousell, second by Sprang. Mike, please.
Thank you. Water Department Director Chris Lester is recommending City Council approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the revised environmental information document and direct staff to submit the required documentation. This project has been awarded funding through the Iowa State Revolving Fund, or SRF, program, which is administered locally by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. As part of the loan process, the project is subject to a federally mandated environmental review. The SRF program offers several financial advantages, including variable, low interest rates, paying interest only on funds they are drawn as they are drawn, 0% interest loans for planning and design costs for up to three years or until construction begins, and flexible repayment terms of up to 30 years. These features help reduce overall project costs and improve long-term affordability for the community. The environmental review is summarized in an environmental information document, which is provided to the city by the Department of Natural Resources and SRF environmental staff. The environmental information document will be made available upon request, and a hard copy will be available two weeks prior to the public hearing and will also be accessible at the hearing itself. The hearing notice will be advertised to the public not less than 30 days before the date of the hearing. Any public comments received during the hearing will be submitted to the Department of Natural Resources and SRF staff for consideration. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We're on a public hearing to consider City Council approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the revised environmental information document and direct staff to submit the required documentation. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
All right. Back to us then for any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprang.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number two is proceedings for public hearing for the issuance of not-to-exceed $2,330,000 water revenue capital loan notes, uh, State Revolving Fund Loan Program, North English Road Water Main.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprang.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Sprang, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson is recommending City Council approval of the suggested proceedings for a public hearing on the issuance of a not-to-exceed $2,330,000 water revenue capital loan notes, uh, State Revolving Fund Loan Program, North English Road Water Main.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprang.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Sprang, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson is recommending City Council approval of the suggested proceedings for a public hearing on the issuance of a not-to-exceed $2,330,000 water revenue capital loan notes, State Revolving Loan Fund Program, the proceeds of which will be used to fund the North English Road Water Main. The North English Road Water Main Extension at the west terminus of the Southwest Arterial Water Main Extension creates a path for a future loop and connection of Pressure Zones Three and Four, when in later phases it can extend to English Mill Road and then south from there to the English Mill Road Pump Station. The Southwest Arterial Water Main Extension, along with the North Cascade Road Water Main Extension, creates an arterial water main loop that extends from the southwest end to the south end of Pressure Zone Three. The Southwest Arterial Water Main Extension consists of a 16-inch arterial water main connecting the end of the North English Road Water Main Extension to the existing 16-inch arterial water main located at the Tamarack Industrial Park. There will also be a tie-in mid-rout to the 16-inch arterial water main at Military Road. The proposed water main extension is planned to be located within existing roadway right-of-way with only one utility easement required along the entirety of the proposed water main route. The project will include the following: approximately 22,150 lineal feet of 16-inch water main with 30 buried butterfly valves, 24 hi- uh, fire hydrants located at approximately 1,000-foot intervals with 6-inch ductile iron leads and isolation gate valves, two creek and stream crossings, including water valve manholes, three board casings, approximately 650 lineal feet, for 16-inch water main at crossings of Military Road, North Cascade Road, and the Southwest Arterial. The State Revolving Fund Loan will have an estimated interest rate of 3.12%, maturity date of June 1st, 2045, and will be abated from the water fund. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We're on a public hearing to consider City Council approval of suggested proceedings for a public hearing on the issuance of not-to-exceed $2,330,000 water revenue capital loan notes from State Revolving Loan Fund Program, proceeds of which will fund the North English Road Water Main. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
All right. Back to us for any discussion. Mr. Sprang.
Um, just as I, we've been talking about infrastructure for off and on for the last three to four years, and this has been discussed in the last, I think, 18 months or more, so just reminding folks that we've talked about it before, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprang. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. And Mr. Van Willigan, if you could talk a little bit about why do we need additional water supply for the southwest arterial area specifically? What are, what are the plans?
Well, the, uh, when the southwest arterial was built, uh, one of the things it creates is an opportunity for the community to extend to the southwest. Of course, we can't extend to the east because the Mississippi River, uh, the north certainly is challenging because I guess I would describe it as Billy Goat Country, and, uh, the Mines of Spain is on the south side of, of Dubuque, the state park. So that really leaves the, uh, southwest area for future expansion. So when the southwest arterial was built, the city had plans and is implementing those plans to extend water and sanitary sewer to that area so that it can be, uh, have future development.
Great. So we're looking forward to, uh, some potential development in the southwest arterial area.
Well, we certainly have had developers who we've talked to that talk about future plans, and, um, I think those plans will fit nicely with our schedule of extending sanitary sewer and water to those areas.
Great. And finally, um, 3.12% uh, interest, would you say that's a substantial reduction from what we would get, uh, just, uh, going out to, uh, other sources for that loan? Or what, what is the, um, what is the advantage of using the State Revolving Loan Fund?
Um, well, uh, I'm going to let, uh, Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson say what we could get on the open market for general obligation debt or, or water revenue debt, but I, uh, but as she comes up, I'll mention there's other, uh, reasons to get an SRF loan through the state, um, in that, for instance, for the planning and design portion of the loan, for three years, that's interest-free. So they recognize that you need to get your project moving before they start charging you interest. Um, and also it offers a much greater term, so, uh, Jennifer can talk about, uh, when we do geo-debt or water revenue debt, how many years we can borrow money for, but we can borrow for a much longer period when we get SRF money. And then, of course, there's the advantage of the, uh, more attractive interest rate.
Good evening, Jennifer Larson, Chief Financial Officer. Uh, so the State Revolving Fund Loan Debt is now a ver- variable rate, so that does change quarterly. The 3.12% is an estimate based on the current quarter, um, that was published by IFA. Compared to general obligation debt, um, I believe our last issuance was somewhere in the range between 4.15% and 4.3%, so it is lower than general obligation. In addition, we do have lower issuance fees. We do not have to be rated by, um, our rating agency, Moody's Investor Service. Uh, there's less involvement from bond counsel and also from our financial advisor, and we also do not have to publish an official statement since we're not going on the open market. So we do, um, have reduced costs with, um, that not happening. Um, SRF debt, if issued as a revenue, uh, debt, which it is in this case, you can issue for 20 years with special approval from S- IFA. It can be issued up to 30 years. We're proposing 20 years for this issuance.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any others? I've always heard Mike refer to it as Billy Goat Country, but I've never actually seen the Billy Goats out there.
Sorry.
Yeah. Comes up a lot, though. All right. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution, so it, um, almost did it. Trish, call the roll, please.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprang.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number three is resolution approving a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and Outfly Development LLC, providing for the sale of city-owned real estate to Outfly Development LLC, and the in- insurance of urban renewal tax increment, increment revenue grant obligation pursuant to the development agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Assistant Economic Development Director Ian Hatch is recommending City Council adopt the attached resolution approving a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque and Outfly Development LLC, providing for the sale of city-owned real estate to Outfly Development, and the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement. Outfly Development, the developer and real estate owner leading this project, has requested the city sell two parcels along Verena Court and the Dubuque Industrial Center to Outfly Development for the relocation of the existing Hodge Company Material Handling Operation and the construction of a new 75,000-square-foot speculative industrial facility to be leased- to a future industrial user. Hodge Company has historically played a strategic role in helping recruit and attract business, business expansion in the community by repositioning and relocating its operations in ways that create new business opportunities. This project continues that tradition with Outfly Development leading a broader, multi-phase development anchored by a Hodge Company operation and delivering new capacity to support future business attraction in the community. Key elements of the development agreement are as follows: developer to purchase parcel A for $868,500 or $150,000 per acre times almost six acres, with a total acquisition of 6.72 acres, the 5.79 being usable, and city to award a land acquisition grant for parcel A in the amount of 50% of the purchase price. Number two, developer to purchase parcel B for $724,500, $150,000 per acre times 4.83 usable acres, with a total acquisition of 4.83 acres. City to award a land acquisition grant for parcel B in the amount of 50% of the purchase price. Number three, for each year after 2029, that a completed building of not less than 75,000 square feet is not completed on parcel B, developer will forfeit 10% of the total parcel B purchase price in the event of a revesting back to the city. If developer does not have a completed building of not less than 75,000 square feet on parcel B by December 31, 2032, developer shall reconvey parcel B to the city for $30,000 per acre. Number four, developer may request to extend timelines for completion of the building on parcel B by paying 10% of the parcel B purchase price to the city. By 2038, there is no completed building on parcel B, developer shall reconvey parcel B to the city for $30,000 per acre, and all extension payments will be forfeited to the city. Five, no more than 14 people may work in the building at any time until after March 1, 2028. If by that date the city has not completed sewer improvements necessary to allow for more than 14 employees at the site, then the city shall immediately implement a temporary sanitary sewer solution at city's sole expense and maintain said solution at city's sole expense. Number six, developer to construct on parcel A an industrial use facility or material handling facility of not less than 50,000 square feet by June 30, 2027. Number seven, developer to construct on parcel B a speculative industrial facility of not less than 75,000 square feet by December 31, 2032. The speculative industrial facility will be leased to a future tenant. Number eight, developer must maintain its existing 14 full-time positions and create 10 new, new full-time positions on either parcel A or parcel B by October 1, 2029. The 24 full-time positions must be maintained during the term of this agreement. Number nine, the land acquisition grant requires having at least 24 full-time positions beginning October 1, 2029 through the end of the agreement. Number 10, city to award a 10-year tax increment financing incentive for parcel A in the form of semi-annual rebates. This incentive is calculated in relation to the number of jobs committed in the development agreement. Number 11, city to award a 10-year tax increment financing incentive for parcel B in the form of semi-annual rebates. This incentive is calculated in relation to the number of jobs committed in the development agreement. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council adopt the attached resolution approving a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Outfly Development LLC, providing for the sale of city-owned real estate to Outfly Development, and the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. Do we have anyone here from the public to address us on this item? Seeing no one here. I do know that Mr. Fulan was going to join us online. I want to, Mike, is there anything you'd like to say to this? Not hearing anything? Okay. All right.
He's here. Does he need to be unmuted?
Not forcing him to talk, just wanted to make sure I gave him a chance. All right.
Give him an option.
Perfect. All right. Okay. Back to us then for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
So I will talk on behalf of the Hodge Company to thank them very much for their continued commitment to the economic development here in Dubuque, especially in that industrial area, and just wanted to give them a shout out for the continued expansion because I think that's really what Dubuque needs, and I look forward to seeing this come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, Ms. Russell.
I had a question on item number five. It says that if the city hasn't completed sewer improvements necessary by March 1, 2028, I was just curious what we think our completion date is. Is this, does this give us a little flexibility, or is this like, ooh, maybe we might not get there, or?
Well, it's consistent with our plans, but the, the other important point is that their requirement to get to 24 full-time employees on that site doesn't take effect till October 1, 2029. So there is some margin in there of, through, from March 1, 2028 to October 1, 2029.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really like the items three and four, where basically that gives us, like, I wouldn't call them clawback, but they're consequences. So if the Hodge Company can't follow through, we get our property back. So I'm appreciative of that, those two items. So, thank you.
Mr. Resnick.
Yes. So, Mr. Van Milligan, I'm talking about the land acquisition grant, the 50% and other incentives. And it's been my experience in discussions that we try to develop generally consistent criteria for developers. Now, Ms. Farber talked about Hodge Company as a community partner, and they've been great partners, but we have, it doesn't really affect what our incentives are. We don't favor certain companies over others, right? We try to develop consistent criteria. Could you talk about that a little bit? It's difficult because every project is different.
Right, it is. But generally, our principle is we support industrial development, not necessarily commercial development, except in certain areas like in our downtown urban renewal district. But as, as far as industrial development, which we consider this, that if you're willing to invest the money and create at least 10 new jobs, the city is willing to provide a land discount and tax increment financing support to make your project work. And that's consistent with what's happening here. The, the nice thing about this one, the unusual twist, I would call it, is the building, the spec building. So that'll create an opportunity for some unknown business, that we don't know who that is today. Might be an existing business that needs a place to expand, or it might be a new business to our community, and we appreciate that Michael Fulan and the Hodge Company are willing to make that investment to create that opportunity for some future growth.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any others? Okay. Well, motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. So Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Public hearing number four is resolution adopting a Lake Ridge Urban Revitalization Plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that we receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Assistant Economic Development Director Ian Hatch is recommending city council adopt the attached resolution adopting the proposed Lake Ridge Urban Revitalization Plan. CAL-5 LLC, a subsidiary of Callahan Construction, purchased the property in June 2025. The previous property owner planned to construct three multifamily apartment buildings on the property, but only constructed one building completely and one building partially. As of January 1, 2025, only 75% of the second building had been assessed. To incentivize the completion of this project, staff recommend applying a 73% tax abatement on the incremental property value generated by the completion of the project for a duration of 10 years. The incremental property taxes will be those taxes generated above the existing 2025 assessed valuation. The property currently resides within an urban renewal district, but must also reside in an urban revitalization order, area, in order to receive tax abatement. The Long Range Planning Advisory Commission has reviewed the plan for the Lake Ridge Urban Revitalization Area and forwarded its recommendation to the city council affirming the plan is consistent with the 2017 Imagine Dubuque Comprehensive Plan. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council adopt the attached resolution adopting the proposed Lake Ridge Urban Revitalization Plan. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item?
Good evening. My name is Joey Callahan. I'm here on behalf of Callahan Construction for the entrance of the Lake Ridge property into the urban, even urban revitalization area for the tax abatement on the third building. I'm also here to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Joey, for your comments. All right. Anyone else? Anyone virtually?
No.
All right. Back to us then for any discussion. Ms. Russell.
I was pleased to see that the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission had given us input on this issue. It's always good to hear from our citizen commissions on decisions like this, and that was really helpful.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Farber.
And similar to the previous comments I just made, I wanted to thank you and your dad for stepping up to make this completion in that area. That's very important, is it's really being revitalized and refreshed. So with great appreciation for all that you're doing. Thank you.
Any others? Okay. All right. This one makes a lot of sense to move forward. Joey, thanks for being here to answer any questions, even though we don't really have any right now. This is kind of one of the next steps in moving this whole thing forward. So appreciate all the work that you're doing on it. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Should pass at seven zero.
Public hearing number five is public hearing on the plans, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the 2025 Water and Resource Recovery Center MCC Communications and PLC Upgrades Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Wethel, second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. Water and Resource Recovery Center Director Darren Mirring is recommending city council adopt the attached resolution approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $2,950,000 for the 2025 Water and Resource Recovery Center MCC Communications and PLC Upgrades Project. Funding for the Industrial Controls Upgrade Project was approved by the city council as part of the fiscal year 2025 budget. The total project cost was originally estimated to be $3 million and was to be funded over three years for a combination of sanitary sewer construction fund and state revolving fund loans. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council adopt the attached resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost of the 2025 Water and Resource Recovery Center Communications, MCC Communications, and PLC Upgrades Project. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you. All right. Back to us then for any discussion. Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, Mr. Van Milligan, could you tell us about the process for funding this multimillion-dollar project?
Yes. So the funding is broken down into $350,000 that we have in the sanitary sewer fund. Well, I apologize, there's, I've got to add a couple of these numbers up. Well, I'll just, I'll just say them each individually and what their source is. $350,000 in the fiscal year '25 sanitary sewer fund, so those existing dollars, again, in fiscal year 2025, so that's the year that just ended. A $750,000 SRF loan, and we just talked about SRF loans. They're low-interest, long-term loans through the state. Fiscal year 2027, the sanitary sewer fund will have $923,705 for this project and $76,295, again, in an SRF loan. And fiscal year 2028, $146,500 SRF loan, and then take you back to fiscal year 2026, which is the current year that we're in. We anticipate $966,000 in insurance proceeds from the accident that happened at the plant.
So there's no general obligation bonds, and it'll be covered, in the meantime, with the sewer charges that we're currently planning and, and charging right now?
Correct. So the, our sanitary sewer fund, which includes the sanitary sewers and the Water and Resource Recovery Center, is an enterprise fund, so it's self-funding. It doesn't have property tax subsidies. So, yes, so all, all this money is coming from our sanitary sewer fund.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Sprank.
Mayor, I have a question actually for our legal counsel, Krena. Will we be seeking replacement damages for all this work?
I'm going to give you the lawyer answer, which is I can't give you all of that information because there's some attorney-client privilege information there that I would not be comfortable disclosing, but I will say that we're exploring all available remedies.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any others? All right. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Moving on to public input, at this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on an action item on the agenda or on Adam, pardon me, or on items, matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council cannot take any formal action on comments giving dirt, given during public input or that do not relate to an action item on the agenda.
Thank you, Trish. Public input.
Good evening, Clark Slows, 2925 Burlington Street. I'm here to speak about the minimum guaranteed revenue for Denver Air. I was one time to say supporter of this, but, you know, looking at, you know, it's gone from 1.6 million, maybe up to 2.5 million, not seeing any, you know, light at the end of the tunnel on when these taxpayer dollars are going to go for, you know, guaranteed minimum revenue. I'm just going to use the 1.6 million. Forgive a retired civil engineer, but I can see three better uses for 1.6 million. The resurfacing program, ASL, resurfacing that can either be done by city staff or bid out, concrete streets, or to Eagle Point Park improvements. I, I just can't see at this time with an unknown, how should we say, is there a light at the end of the tunnel when this guaranteed minimum revenue would go away? And if there is no light at the end of that tunnel, I can't really support that. That's all I got.
Thank you, Clark, for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Rob McDonald. I reside at 3399 Eagle Point Drive in Dubuque. I'm not here to talk about the airport subsidy in the form of... I'm not here to talk about the airport subsidy in the form of the last gentleman. I want to talk about the process that got us here. I read the 10-page memo that our city manager provided for tonight's meeting, and what struck me was the very last sentence. It reads, "The mayor and city council could discuss during the April 2026 fiscal year 2027 budget process if there will be a budget allocation for a future minimum revenue guarantee payment beyond June 30th, 2026, if one is needed." Well, I watched most of the budget meetings, and when I read that, I don't recall that happening in our April meeting on the airport that happened April 8th. And I viewed the video over the weekend, and I was right. It was about 52 minutes meeting. Airport Director Todd Dollsing behind me presented for about 18 minutes, and there was about 32 minutes of discussion by council and staff. There were a couple of follow-up questions, but most of that discussion centered around $10,000 in advertising. And there was a lot of hand wringing over that. It was a good discussion. I think you vetted it very well, but that's all that was spoken about. And when you look at the amount of dollars that we're talking about now, the $10,000 seems rather insignificant. What was never brought up during that budget meeting was maintaining the minimum revenue guarantee or that the small community air service development grant was about ready to run out. No mention that the first three months of the 2025 minimum revenue guarantee was trending 25% above the first two months of the program, which occurred at the end of 2024. There was no mention of the possibility of needed budget allocations in this fiscal year, as was mentioned in the memo talking about next year. This was a great opportunity to provide citizens with headlights. Now, we're only seeing the taillights. So, what did the council know at that time that was not shared with taxpayers? Either there was some knowledge and you knew about it at this meeting, or maybe you didn't, which is worse? I don't know. It appears you didn't know because it wasn't brought up. "I don't believe the contract with Denver Air Connection has been made public, but I understand there are renewals in certain monthly increments. That would mean we renewed at some time earlier this year. It appears to have been renewed without a vote and no budget authority to pay for the minimum revenue guarantee for the balance of 2025. Remember, there was no discussion about it at the April budget meeting. What has resulted is a lack of transparency leading up to this point, including the last council meeting. There was a belief in the community that there would be a council vote on September 15th at the last council meeting, but there wasn't. It was later reported by the Telegraph Herald that the city was likely on the hook through the end of the year to pay the minimum revenue guarantee due to contractual obligations. Did the council vote on a contract extension? If so, when? If not, why? Citizens are confused, and I would also add upset. Is the minimum revenue guarantee up for a vote, or did the city already commit? That has not been shared. Or does the city have a blank check to fund air service since it is a top priority of this mayor and council? Do you know what also is confusing to our citizens? All of the public-private entities contributing to the air service kitty. We have Travel Dubuque, Dubuque Initiatives, Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, Chamber of Commerce, even the DRA is helping with hotel rooms for the pilots. All of these entities have a board of directors, and most have more than one city council member as board members. Some have two, some have three. The city manager sits on every board I mentioned except one, the chamber. All of these organizations have contributed to this airport subsidy, some passing along tax dollars given to them by the city of Dubuque. People are confused by this mixed master of funding because we aren't being transparent where the original funding from these organizations is really coming from. So, getting to transparency, in the League of Women Voters Forum last month in these chambers, Mayor Kavanaugh said something worth repeating, given the heaviness of the airline subsidy issue. He said, "I'm just going to say it out loud. It doesn't get more transparent than the city of Dubuque." That's not what the citizens are experiencing right now. I'm reminded of something my dad always shared with me when he was alive. He'd say, "Rob, if someone's got to tell you how smart they are, they're probably not real smart. Conversely, if they got to tell you how successful they are, they're probably not that successful. So, let's talk about transparency." When we're always told that there's transparency coming from this council and city staff, maybe we're not getting the transparency we expect because we're being told. Don't tell us you are transparent. Please show us. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for your service to our city.
Thanks, Rob. Others?
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, City Manager Mike Van Milligan, most excellent city staff. My name is Rick Dickinson, and I reside at 205 Hill Street here in Dubuque. I'm here in my capacity to start with as the president and CEO of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, and to follow up on a letter of request made to the mayor and council a number of weeks ago regarding the imperative of revenue guarantee to assure that this community was competitive in having commercial air service. So, why would I do that? Why would the board of directors of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation do that? Well, here's why. Elected officials and public servants are partners. Nonprofits, higher education, public schools, they're our partners. But our client at Greater Dubuque Development Corporation is the employer, and the 60-plus-thousand of our neighbors in this county and surrounding counties that work for them. Greater Dubuque Development has the most robust business retention and expansion program in the state, I know, and I believe it's the most robust program in the country. We sit down every year in a program called Info Action. You give us the information, and we'll act on it. We sit down with, last year, from July 1 of 2024 till June 30 of 2025, we sat down with 255 chief executive officers of that which they represent. Probably around 75% of the workforce works for those folks. And we ask very detailed questions. In fact, I'm embarrassed to say there are 51 questions that we ask. It's confidential. We do not attribute that to any one individual, but we collect that data. We understand what's going on at that company, and if there's something we can do to help, or is there an opportunity we can jump on. But we also then roll that in on a macro level to try to understand what's going on in this community, what things can we do to fix it. Here's the results of the 255 interviews done last year. Top three community strengths according to business. Quality of life and amenities, one. Two, market size, location, customer loyalty. Three, community leadership, support, partnerships. Top three barriers to growth? Workforce, labor pool shortage. Population and market size. Availability of land, and it just happens to be landlocked, and you need to have someplace else if you're going to expand. The top three weaknesses are, number one, commercial air service. Number one, commercial air service. Number two, population and market size. Three, workforce and labor pool. We go forward with question 50. It asks simply this. Looking at the long-term viability of both your company and this community, which of the following efforts do you believe should be prioritized to increase the competitiveness of the city, region, and state? And it includes increasing housing opportunities for workforce, workforce upskilling initiatives, emergency and health services, air and water quality improvements, downtown revitalization, infrastructure and broadband, talent attraction initiatives, K-12 education, higher education, recreational opportunities, reduction of waste, arts and entertainment venues, childcare diversity initiatives, retail, dining, community sports complex, tax climate, infrastructure, utility systems, infrastructure transportation systems, passenger air service, creation of more viable energy, and other. Number one of those 23 criterias, including other, was increased housing opportunities. And of course, that's what we've talked about doing for the last two years, and you're doing it. Number two of all of those things, commercial air service. That's why we sent you this letter. As a matter of personal privilege, I would say this, not representing my employer. I deeply regret that this critical issue has become a political football. I deeply regret some of the things that are being said and done and distorted for political benefit. To the citizens of Dubuque, I don't think any one of us can avoid having seen the Fly CID billboards up and down Dodge Street. Do you know what CID is? It's Eastern Iowa Airport, Cedar Rapids Airport. Any of us that watch TV have seen these commercials time and time again, "Fly CID to the Dubuque Market." Why is that? It's because Cedar Rapids is trying to drive a stake through the heart of this community by dividing us, by telling us not to fly Dubuque. Come to Cedar Rapids, and you just suffer the consequences. And the fact that we have billboards in this community for those who wish to serve this community that reinforce that message breaks my heart. I ask for your favorable consideration of continuing this. It is a tough, tough vote. It is a tough, tough world. We need time to make this work, and if we prove that we can't make it work, I know you'll make the right decisions at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, I'm Leonard Russ. I live on, like Mike said, the Billy Goen end of town. Great end of town. But the airport, I think too much money's been wasted on it already. Myself, if I flew out of Dubuque, why would I? I could go to Cedar Rapids and get somewhere quicker, straight through. So, I'm just saying that I think as of now, they can't come in and fund themselves. Why should the taxpayers of Dubuque do it? You know, I've seen taxes go up so crazy, spending go up so crazy. You know, the B branch, that should have been paid off in 2015 from when I sat in on the very first meeting in 2004, when they told me they were going to take my house. But by the time I'm dead, that still probably won't be paid off. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Leonard, for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Anne Williams, and I live at 559 Chestnut Street. I'm a newer resident to Dubuque, been here since 2021. And I can tell you that I deeply appreciate having our airport just south of here. I have flown Denver Air four times in the last six months. It's a great way, convenient way to get to Chicago and then wherever I'm going. I understand that it takes money to build a new business, and I understand that many businesses might get some sort of tax subsidies that I'm not paying attention to, but it helps us grow our community. And I think I am so deeply appreciative that you have built this. We're going to give it time. We're going to subsidize it until more and more people are not going to Cedar Rapids but are flying out of our city. It's going to bring more businesses here, and I just really appreciate all the work that you've done, and I fully support what you're going to do for us in terms of continuing air service here in Dubuque. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anne, for your comments.
Good evening. Matt Ostrous, 2139 Wedgewood Drive. I'm a local pilot at the Dubuque Regional Airport. I'm pro aviation, pro airport, pro everything aviation, except for a subsidy on the taxpayer dime. It's unfair. It also comes as a high risk to the taxpayer with no end in sight. Where's the end game? So, I urge to vote no on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt, for your comments. All right. This will be the last call here. After public input, there won't be any more opportunities. We'll bring it back to us for any of the action items. All right. Seeing no further comments, anything virtually, Corey? All right. Okay. All right. Move on, Trish.
Next on the agenda are action items. Action item number one is commercial air service minimum revenue guarantee.
Mr. Jones?
With the receive and file the documents and find a path, discuss a path forward.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Farber. Mike, am I coming to you, or am I going straight to Todd?
Todd's can go ahead and make the presentation.
Great, thanks. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Todd Dollsing, Dubuque Airport. And is this sharing as a PowerPoint? Okay, so obviously, we presented at the last city council meeting. I can get this. Almost been at the best. Okay. We presented an update at the last council meeting. There was more of like a clarification on one, and then also in addition to this second meeting that it was important to bring to your attention. First thing we want to talk about was the catchment area. There was some discussion and confusion about what a catchment area is. So, the Dubuque catchment area is that blue amoeba, I guess-ish looking shape on the screen. Dubuque Airport is the DBQ. Bottom left is CID that was just talked about, Cedar Rapids. Top right, Madison. And you can read from the definition on the left side there. It's a catchment area or service areas, a geographic area surrounding an airport where it can reasonably expect to draw passenger traffic and is representative of the local market. Catchment area contains the population of travelers who should use Dubuque considering the drive time from the catchment area to the competing airports. This population of travelers is Dubuque's focus market for air service improvements and represents the majority of travelers using the local airport. And if you can't quite make them out, I know they're a little bit tough there, but towards the direct west is about the Dyersville area. If you circle around to the north, you get Gottenberg, Parete Sheen area. Circle around to the northwest, you have the Platteville area. Then directly, I'm sorry, east would be Hazel Green, and then continue circling around, you've got the Galena area, Bellevue Cascade. So, that kind of gives you an idea of what our catchment area is. And then according to a 2022 Meaden Hunt study using Global Distribution System and airline data, there are 176,498 passengers in Dubuque catchment area. Passenger demand each way, or PDU as we call it, data indicates there are approximately 505 passengers that fly out of an airport to a destination from the Dubuque catchment area daily. And then, of course, from last week's report, as you know, at a 50% load factor, we're capturing about 25 passengers a day. So, that leaves about 480 yet to be captured. So that leaves about 480 yet to be captured. There were some direct benefits to the Dubuque Airport that I know you all are aware of from listening to budget presentations over the years. We thought it'd be important to bring it up to make sure everybody is aware of those. Federal Aviation Administration, the Airport Improvement Program, or the AIP as we most commonly call it, there is an eligibility report, eligibility to receive those funds. So commercial airports, and this is right from the FAA, commercial airports that have greater than 10,000 employments, and remember, an employment is a passenger getting, going through screening, getting on the plane. It doesn't count if you're coming off, just getting on. They receive, or then that airport will receive 1.3 million a year entitlement, plus, depending on the project, potential discretionary funding. Commercial airports that have less than 10,000 employments receive funding based on an escalating scale based on employments, and again, are eligible for discretionary funding. So to keep it very simple, that escalating sale, for example, half of 10,000 or 5,000 employments would equal $600,050 in entitlement. And then, as you know from the previous presentation, again, Dubuque is on track to reach 7,000 plus. I think the last was 7,500 employments for calendar year '25. And then finally, commercial airports with no scheduled commercial air service are also known as general aviation airports, receive little, if any, AIP funding or discretionary funding. So with no, to say that again, with no commercial air service, we wouldn't be eligible for AIP or discretionary funding, or very little. So an example of what that AIP funding is used for, and you've seen this over the past two, maybe three years, when we started the design for the Texaway Alpha Project. This project is phased over five years, 2024 through '28, engineer estimate $40 million project, use an FAA entitlement, discretionary funding. This project is eligible for 90% federal funding, or $36 million, and 10% local, or $4 million. So on the diagram, Phase One, the green portion in the top left of your screen has been complete. Phase Two, the blue portion is currently in progress. We're actually wrapping up the final phases of that this summer. And then Phase Three, the purple, we've received the go letter from the FAA to start to go out for bids for the grant for next year. Phases Four and Five are obviously to be determined. In my past experience, I've not known an FAA, the FAA to start a project and not finish it. However, in this case, you know, we may have to make some design changes and reduce costs. Some other direct benefits to the airport is, you've heard me talk about a passenger facility charge, or a PFC. Dubuque Airport receives $4.39 passenger facility charge for each passenger and plane. Again, that's passengers just getting on the plane, not coming off. Dubuque FAA-approved PFC plan instead, has dedicated to the AIP program, project, to pay toward annual debt service on their local 10% match. So for an example, using ERJ, or what we currently have, 145 50-seat aircraft at our goal of 80%, do all those calculations out, and that's an annual revenue for the airport of just over, or just under $64,000. And then, of course, there's the direct job retention at the airport. As you know, Dubuque Jet Center does the ground handling for Denver Air, and that has two full-time employees and 10 part-time employees, for a total of 12. Talking with TSA, they have five full-time, five part-time employees, that's 10 employees. Avis has one full-time, one part-time, and then there's also the bag delivery service of one full-time, for a total of 25 employees that jobs could be in jeopardy of loss of service. There's also the added of restaurant employees with sustained service, and this, of course, does not include any secondary services like cabs or, you know, gosh, the many things that go on at the airport. And with that, I think that covers, the rest was in the original memo from the last council meeting, but I'm here for any questions, too.
Thank you, Todd. Did I hear something about a video? Trish said something about a video? No?
No, just that PowerPoint.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Then I would just like to read my conclusion of my recommendation.
Sure, please.
Thank you. I respectfully recommend that the mayor and city council dedicate $2.4 million to a minimum revenue guarantee for Denver Air commercial air service for the current fiscal year through June 30th, 2026, and an additional $100,000 to the marketing of that service, because the more people that fly, the less time a minimum revenue guarantee will be required. I further respectfully recommend that the mayor and city council put out a challenge to the business community to provide $750,000 of a minimum revenue guarantee for Denver Air. The business community would have until December 10th, 2025, to raise $750,000, with the city providing a dollar-for-dollar match for each dollar raised up to the $750,000. I have contacted both the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation and the Dubuque Area Chamber of Commerce, and they say they accept this challenge. Not only will the business community be asked to contribute funds, but they would be asked to help with approaching the federal government to provide financial assistance to support commercial air service at Dubuque Regional Airport, like they do for smaller airports across Iowa and across the United States. The mayor and city council could discuss during the April 2026 fiscal year 2027, which is July 1st, 2026 through June 30th of 2027, budget process, if there will be a budget allocation for a future minimum revenue guarantee payment beyond June 30th, 2026, if one is needed.
Thank you, Mike. All right, I'll kick us off here with discussion, then we can go for, around the table and see what everybody has to say. So let me just start by saying that I will never forget the day that I got this phone call. It was June of my first year as mayor, and I was on a hike, and I got a call from the American Airlines representative saying that they were going to pull out of Dubuque. All the flights were going to stop, and it was going to be in September. Really ruined my hike that day, got to tell you. You know, it was funny, because in that moment, I recognized even that this was going to be, this was going to take up just so much oxygen of my first term as mayor. I just knew it at the start. I just knew right away that this was going to be probably the thorniest, most difficult issue that I and this council and basically our entire community and region would have to deal with, and I was not wrong. This has been incredibly frustrating from the start for everybody involved in it, and that means everybody, everybody who lives here. You know, it's interesting when I, when I have this conversation with people, and it's interesting now, because, you know, we're in this campaign mode of being able to talk to lots and lots of people, which is great. But one of the things that is a unifying factor in everybody's discussion is just how frustrated they are with the situation. Everybody sort of feels like, whether they're for this proposal that's before us tonight or whether they're against it, everybody gets, or seems to get at least, that this is a, this is a frustrating issue, that we have to deal with this. And I think people really generally understand, we shouldn't be in this situation. We shouldn't be here. The only reason that the city of Dubuque is in this situation is because we fall in a crack in federal government funding that nobody else has fallen into. There's several other, handful of airports had kind of a similar issue, but ours seems to have been the worst. Out of all the airports that lost service in that same year in 2022, ours seems to be the one that has been the most difficult to get out of. Several others, like I'll use Williamsburg, Pennsylvania as an example, they were able to get a, I think it was like a nine-seat prop plane, if I'm not mistaken, to be able to start flying from their airport to where they need to go. Obviously, they're in a different geographical situation, not quite as far as we are from other airports. I've said over and over again that we are the farthest, really, of any other airport outside of Del Rio, Texas, that to have to drive somewhere to get on a plane if we lose these flights. So we've just been in this really difficult situation from the start, and I think that's the part that everybody gets. So everybody understands that. And I can totally understand that frustration, and I can understand arguments on all sides of this. What I do think is really unfortunate is that this really has become such a political issue. I get why. It's a campaign year. It's the way it goes. But I do think it's unfortunate, because I can't think of another place in the United States where there'd be a group of candidates running to take air service away from the community that has it. I can't think of another place in the world, I think, that would be in that situation. But here we are, and that's the situation that we're in. So I want to clarify a few things, just to make sure that it's really clear, and then I'll get to what I'm, what I'm thinking personally for this particular issue. There are two ways that airports sustain air service in the United States. There's really only two ways that they do it. The first is that they're able to sustain air service just through demand alone. So think your bigger airports. You got your O'Hairs, even Cedar Rapids was mentioned tonight, they're a larger airport. They sustain that service ongoing. They might throw out a minimum revenue guarantee every once in a while to get a new leg going or something like that, but for the most part, they've got a sustainable service, and the demand is there, so people keep coming. The second way that air services sustain the United States and any other airport that can't do it on its own is 100% federal funding, taxpayer dollars that come from the federal government. It's called the Essential Air Service Program. We've talked about it quite a bit here, but that's the other way that people do it. So there's a list of those other cities in Iowa that are in this situation, Waterloo, Burlington, Sioux City, Fort Dodge, and Mason City, and nothing against those great cities, but they are in part of the EAS program, so they actually get this funding. The situation that we're in here is, we have two options in front of us. We can either accept this proposal, or we end service right now, and then it just ends. I want to make that really, really clear. There is no other option right now. Anybody who thinks that they're going to march over to Washington, DC, and talk to Congress and say, hey, we just lost our air service, we demand to get into the EAS program, and think that they're just going to flip a switch and get us back in there, then I don't think you've been reading the news, because that ain't happening right now. There's no other option in front of us. So the only thing that we can do as a community is, somebody has to pay the minimum revenue guarantee to get us to a point of sustainability. We hoped that we'd be able to get there by now. So when we first had this, we, we had a small community air service development grant from the federal government. It was with a match, with local dollars matched in there, $2.1 million, give or take. And we had hoped that we'd be able to start service, and then that would be able to sustain itself, and we'd have this flight around 80% full on a regular basis, like we, like we wanted it, so we wouldn't have to have a discussion like we're having tonight. We didn't quite get there, so we're stuck on the hook with this. And when I say "we," I mean all of us here. There have been a dedicated group of people working on this issue from the moment that we heard about it in 2022. I understand that a lot of people weren't necessarily paying attention to it, but it's unfortunate now that it just seems like, well, I'll back up on this. So here's what I think is the path forward, and I do think that there, there has to be a light at the end of the tunnel. I heard that term a few times tonight from some of the people who are giving comments, and I've heard it when I've talked to people, too. We cannot do this indefinitely as a city. We absolutely should not do this indefinitely as a city and fund a minimum revenue guarantee ongoing with local property tax dollars, or frankly speaking, local business dollars even. That's, that's called the EAS program. That's what that is. That's what that is for. If we are a community that can't sustain air service on our own, then we need to continue to demand that we enter the EAS program, and Congress has to open the door to let us in. It is firmly shut right now. They do not want to reopen the EAS program to let us in. And what they've been telling us over and over again is, you don't want to be in the EAS program, you want to try to get sustainable air service. I agree with that statement. We would love to have sustainable air service. So what I think we should do, in this case, and this is my opinion, and then I'll open it up to my colleagues, I do think we should accept this proposal at this time. And when it comes to the decision points that, that are listed, so December of this year and April of next year, then this council should reevaluate the situation at that time and decide if there is light at the end of the tunnel. Because if this flight is not reaching a point of sustainability or even getting close to it by then, especially by April, then I think it is absolutely time to say, all right, we gave it the best shot we could, we got to go back and put all of our effort, 100% of it, just on federal advocacy to be able to make this work. Because if we're able to make it sustainable by then, then it's sustainable. Then we can be on a path where that MRG is squeezed, it's smaller and smaller, because there's more people on the plane, ticket prices are where they need to be, and the MRG gets smaller and smaller, and we don't have to pay as much out or any out at all. That's the goal. But if that doesn't work, then our only option in front of us that I can see is that we are an EAS community. That's, that's the only option that I see at that point. So I'm hopeful that working with the business community, potentially other partners in the region, that they might be able to step up and help to fund this to try to get it to sustainability. And I think we should at least try as a community, because we haven't even given it a full year yet. This started in November. I know the news cycle seems like it's really full all the time, and it's hard to remember that we haven't even done this for a year, but I think we should at least try. I think we got to at least try to run through the tape on this one. And if we, if we don't, I don't think we've given it enough of a try, and I, I don't think we have yet a strong enough argument to go to Congress and say, we are absolutely an EAS program community. I don't think we have enough evidence to show that yet. I think we have to give this more of a shot on our own and take it all the way, and if we can't do it, and if it doesn't work, then we have some really good evidence to take to Congress and say, I get that we're weird, I get that we're an exception, but you got to let us into this program at that point. So that's kind of where I'm sitting with this. And I just want to make it really clear, nobody up here is having any fun talking about this. This is the least amount of fun that I've had in this role, is dealing with this issue. This issue has been just absolutely galling from the start, but it's been worth it. It's worth, it's worth fighting for us. This is one of those things that I really do think we need. I think we need air service in this community, and I think we should try our hardest to get it, and go through some of these difficult periods to try and get there, knowing that we might fail, but still trying, because it's worth it. And then if we do fail, having some sort of a plan to pivot and keep working. So that would be where I, where I stand on this currently, and I'd love to hear everybody else's thoughts and see where we go with this. Ms. Rissell.
Well, I have several points that I wanted to share, but first I had a question. Is one of the reasons that we were left out of EAS because at the time that the determinations were being made, we were a self-sustaining airport? Is that correct, Todd?
Yes, Todd Dollsing, Dubuque Airport. Yeah, that is correct, because we were not participating in the program at that time. Therefore, we are not currently eligible, and we were not participating in the program because we were self-sufficient. That is correct.
Okay. I think that's a really important point to keep in mind. I have, I have several points that I think are important to me about this topic, and one is that air service is an expectation of communities. And community funding for infrastructures like this is, it's like other services, like sewer and water, safety in your streets. And this infrastructure and community amenities, they're built to serve the entire population with broad and long-term benefits, and not everyone uses every feature of the community. But together, we work to create a community that enhances the overall quality of life for everyone, both sometimes directly and sometimes indirectly, with benefits like, you know, $19 million economic impact from our airport. I think it's really important to note that we have broad support from well-respected and expert organizations like the GDDC Chamber, educational institutions that represent thousands of residents, businesses, employers, and students that call Dubuque home, and those that might want to call Dubuque home. I think this proposal that we have before us that asks our businesses to be a financial part of the solution will really confirm how important they feel this is to them and help us shoulder the costs moving forward. I believe this is part of a multi-year process, and that Dubuque Air has worked diligently to seek every possible avenue for funding and service. And we've invested a lot in the process, and now is not the time to stop, because if we lose it now, we might never get another opportunity. So I know we've been successful in the past, so let's continue to work our process. And the process that's recommended here allows us to build on the work that's been done, builds in some more partnerships with those businesses that want to support us, and the checkpoints that will assure us that it's not a forever fund. So let's invest in our future and continue to move forward. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Rissell.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Just briefly tonight, because we did have a pretty thorough vetting of this conversation at our last council meeting in September, and since that meeting, we've been to goal setting for three very grueling evenings, and came out with maintenance of air service and expansion of air service. out with maintenance of air service and expansion of air service as a high priority again. So that's in the bank, the previous conversations in the bank. Just two quick points I want to make. Prior to COVID, we had 100-plus employments daily leaving the Dubuque Regional Airport. To think that we can't get to 40 right now is defeatist. I think we can get to 40. And I do get that things have changed. The business community has discovered that they can electronically meet and don't have to fly all over the world to have meetings, and that's reduced some of the demand. But the rest of the demand is still there. We've got habits to break. We've got to challenge our citizens to come back to Dubuque that have gone elsewhere. And if we can just get a few of them to do that, we can get to sustainability pretty quickly. And I want to talk about the economic development piece of it. Simmons has come to Dubuque and grown fairly rapidly, and they're a very good employer and a very good neighbor and really can't say anything bad about them. I can't imagine that we could have made that happen had there not been air service for their representatives to come and see. We sent Rick down to sniff around their headquarters to make sure they were good neighbors. Of course, we did that by air. But their executive team came here, looked us over, flew back and forth several times and thought this is the place we want to be. I don't know directly how they feel about the continuity of air service, but I do know that they likely wouldn't be in Dubuque but for that conversation and that opportunity. I also think that other companies that are talking to search firms that find locations that GDDC deals with blindly a lot, when they're looking at prospects to send information out to, asking for a response, that if they don't see an airport, they're going down the list to a place that does have an airport. Pretty plain and simple. We're not a town of 2,000 out in the middle of nowhere. We're a town of 60,000 people with a catchment area that's much greater than that that deserve reliable daily air service to the rest of the world. And it's just, when all the business advocates, advocacy agencies, the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, the Chamber of Commerce have worked on this with the tremendous energy, person power, financial power that they've put into it, with the support of the, some of the most respected businesses in Dubuque, Cottingham and Butler Crescent, Loris Travel Dubuque, University of Dubuque, the letters that we're getting from the leaders of these institutions talking about the harm that would befall them but for service of being available, I think we've got to go for a while. And I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, it's not a forever thing. I see the light at the end of the tunnel. The light at the end of the tunnel is getting 40 people to average being on these flights. And it's not a terrible stretch goal. It's going to cost us some money to get there, plain and simple. We know why, we know how. And this vote may have some political costs, but it's the right vote. I'm going to support the city manager's proposal. It shares the load, it reinforces the message to the community that we need you to buy your tickets from here, to fly from here when you can. And I get that it doesn't always work. Doesn't always work in a big airport either. You might have to go somewhere else once in a while to get where you need to go. But we've all got to get together and try, or our growth is going to dwindle, our successes are going to be less frequent, and our failures are going to become more frequent. This is an essential piece of municipal service that we have to continue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Farber.
So I just want to reiterate the overall consensus here is that we are between a rock and a hard place. And sometimes you kind of have to figure out how to walk between those two. And, you know, I like, amongst others here, I like to go hiking. And I think in this case, I would like to see the horizon on a nice plane of a nice field. And I think that we need time here to reach the plateau. We need time to try to make this work. The fact is that we need, we are in the midst of an economic momentum right now. And a good example is the University of Dubuque, which has most recently had the opportunity to announce a third pillar in addition to aviation expansion and the Osteopath School for Medicine of an Innovation Engineering School. And what does this mean? That means that there's going to be 2,000 to 3,000 students here on campus. Where are they going to live? How are they going to get here? What's the motivation to keep and attract and retain these young professionals as they are graduating? And I think very similar to infrastructure, whether you look at the internet, whether you look at sewer, water, as Ms. Russell had said, that the air service is really an infrastructure and is one of the cogs to increase our economic momentum. So I think that we really need to progress, and I agree that we need to look at it from both sides of the coin in order to move forward. But I do have a question for Mr. Dalsing. One of the things that I would like to better understand, and maybe you can give me some information about what is behind the scenes with our neighbors, with the catchment area that you had talked about, are there conversations with those major cities? And I know that I think actually the county has had a conversation as to who might be able to participate in a partnership with us at the management of the airport and funding of some of this.
Sure, yeah. Great question. I'm sorry, I probably should have added that as part of my update earlier, but yes, matter of fact, we did a presentation for the county supervisors this morning. I think it was educational, it was discussion-based, and they're going to take it back and evaluate where they would like to take it from there. So we'll be hearing back from the county board, Dubuque County Board of Supervisors here real soon. And I know, and I don't want to speak for the mayor, but I know there's been, you know, some conversations with some other communities about, you know, hey, how can we work together as a partnership? I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add to that.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll mention, I mean, I reached out specifically to Dyersville and Platteville this week, spoke to the mayors and city managers there, just to say, you know, basically to ask the question, are you guys supportive of this? And would you voice that support? And they did express that they are supportive and they would like to publicly voice that support. I imagine we'll be hearing it soon. As far as financial support, which is more of your direct question, don't have indication yet that there's at least anybody speaking to me about financial support in this. I think it's potentially waiting for this decision tonight on our part.
Sure.
But I do think that reaching out to other communities to discuss this is, along with, you know, Dubuque County thankfully bringing this topic up as well. I guess I would say absolutely everything's on the table in terms of options for discussing.
Right, because I think, you know, as you're talking about Dyersville and the Field of Dreams, and you're talking about getting people here to the region, if you will, not only for tourism, but all for the job retention and attraction that, you know, the UD Clark and Loris represent to us, it would be interesting, and maybe it is contingent upon what happens to tonight, to hear more about what we can do in partnership with the catchment area because that's really our local team, if you will. And I think that we in Dubuque like to innovate, we like to be different, and to kind of push the envelope, I think, at least in my five years here on council, we've done a lot of extension of that little envelope. It's pretty big right now. And the momentum, as I mentioned previously, is really starting to build for us. And I would like to just, you know, really strongly suggest that we incorporate these partners into this conversation because they're going to help us as a team member in order to get this executed. But I do think we need a short-term and a long-term opportunity here with some thoughts, and I do think that it's important to take the time to make it work. And I'd like to see that this cog in the wheel continues to perhaps be the hub and spoke that we are talking about. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Resnick.
Thank you very much. So I think everybody can agree with the statement, "Commercial air service is critical to Dubuque's future." Comma, but this is where we are. But we've got to solve this problem. I appreciate all the voices I've been hearing, and I understand where people are coming from. I think this council is very responsive to the community, and we understand these are tough times for a lot of people. People have different opinions, and I appreciate that. Even though I disagree with what Mr. McDonald was saying, he was very civil. His family has been a partner in Dubuque since 1860, right? So many good things. We have partners right now, we have partners in the past, and we will have partners in the future. We appreciate them. And I appreciate the difference of opinion expressed. I really appreciate what we've been hearing from our community. It's overwhelming that we absolutely need commercial air service at Dubuque. When we went to visit our federal partners, Molly Grover from the Dubuque Chamber says, "Our priority number one, number two, and number three is commercial air service in Dubuque." And nobody worked harder than our mayor to make that happen, and he's still working to do it, along with Dubuque Air, the group. I was talking to Mr. Dickinson on the, in the room waiting for, to speak with Senator Ernst, and I hope you don't mind me saying this. So Senator Ernst came in, and we talked to her, and we talked about this. And Mr. Dickinson said, "I beg you, Senator Ernst, on behalf of the businesses and developers and all the people in Dubuque, I beg you to do what you can to get air service." There was such an outpouring from the entire group that went with us that said, not only is it important to Dubuque as a city, but to me personally, because everybody up here loves our community. And it's hard to say, we love our community and yet we're going to vote to end air service. I think we really need to give it a shot, a real shot, like we've been talking about here. It has to be temporary. What do we have to see? We have to see community commitment to this very important cog in the wheel that keeps us going, not just now, not just 1860, but into the future, when we're all long gone. Dubuque's going to be a beautiful place to live. So I'm looking forward to this. I actually agree with some things Mr. McDonald said, and we'll talk about that in the next action items about maybe we should be putting this in the budget. But because of this, it is the timeliness and economic imperative that is the Dubuque Airport. I absolutely support this tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Welfler.
I've been a Dubuqueer for 21 years of my life, but for my first 18, I grew up in Sebula, Iowa, 39 miles south of here in Jackson County. When I was born in the 1970s, the population of Sebula was 845 people. In 2020, that population was 506. Like many in rural America, as population fell, community struggled. In 2006, my church closed. In 2011, my school system closed. The population of Jackson County has dropped about 7% overall in that span of time. I was part of the population loss. I came to Dubuque for college, met my husband, left for nine years, and returned to plant my roots. If I wouldn't have come to Clark University, I probably wouldn't have ever come. My husband and I wouldn't have worked in the healthcare industry in Dubuque for the last 17 years. We wouldn't have added three children to our population. So many of those that we hope will grow our population come here for the sole reason of education. When our institutions of higher learning say, "We need air service," we must listen. As we have discussed, this is what it looks like when the federal government forgets about rural America. Air service is transportation infrastructure. Arguing against air service is to show a lack of understanding for its importance. It is the lifeline to grow our economy and our population. What we are talking about is heavy. It is a significant investment for our community right now in the short term. The only certainty is that if we stop now, it is over. Air service is done, and it will not come back. As I shared in our last discussion, I believe that often when people become divisive, hateful, use negative rhetoric, it is not just because they have a lack of understanding. They are playing politics. Instead of listening, they are pushing an agenda to divide us. So many Dubuqueers have invested time, treasure, sweat equity in advocacy. No one playing politics has been here for that fight. They have brought zero ideas to the table. Folks, that is playing politics over people. For decades before me, many have sat here and made hard choices for our community. They didn't see decisions only in the moment, but they looked into the potential of our city and her people for decades to come. That is how we became the prosperous, collaborative, welcoming community that we are today. I am certain those that coming before me received passionate and sometimes angry feedback, I don't know that they were witness to the dehumanizing rhetoric, hate speech, threats of violence, and personal attacks that we have seen as a council. I am incredibly proud of my colleagues before you tonight that show up for the right reasons, and those reasons are our residents. We serve everyone rather than one person or one group based on financial interests or backing. We are not afraid to do the work. We do not let threats and personal attacks stop this work. We have taken an oath to the Constitution. Spreading lies and hate does not work in Dubuque. We can't let it. I do not want our community to bear this financial responsibility of air service long-term. No, I do not. However, I will not do, I will not do, what I will not do is sabotage the work that has been done to get us to where we are today. Anyone who does not support this has not been at the table doing the work and fighting the good fight. If they care so much, where have they been since 2022? We must work together. We must use our air service. We must ask community partners to step up to the plate and continue to grow relationships with our federal partners so that Dubuque is given a level playing field to grow our population and our economy. I will continue to fight for Dubuque, and that means fighting the good fight for air service. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sprague.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've heard from many people and many different perspectives on this issue. When I make decisions, I try not to think about today or even just a year. I try to think what our choices mean five, 10, and even 20 years from now. I believe it would be shortsighted to pull back from our current air service. From everything I've seen and from what the experts have told us, there's no other airline waiting to step in and provide flights out of Dubuque. If we lose this service, it'll be like when the interstate highway system bypassed Dubuque. We risk being bypassed again, this time in the air. We are truly between a rock and a hard place. I commend the mayor and my fellow council members for their efforts to secure funding for our air service in the past, but we need to acknowledge the elephant in the room, the federal essential air service, EAS, rules that prevent Dubuque from participating in this program. The consequences of losing this service will not be immediate, but they'll come, maybe five years from now, when taxiways no longer meet FAA standards, or even 10 years from now, when critical grants are no longer available. FAA grants are one of the few that offer a 90-10 match. An ending commercial air service would put this at risk. An ending commercial air service would put this at risk. This will not just affect the airport, but also the University of Dubuque Aviation Program and private businesses that have invested in the airport's future. If we want to keep commercial air service, the entire community must step up. The City of Dubuque cannot carry this cost alone. We need the county, the state, and broader region to contribute. Dubuque Air has done remarkable work to restore service, but the airport serves far more than just the city. It serves the entire area. After listening to the residents of Ward Three, I will be voting to end the City of Dubuque Subsidy of Denver Air. I know this may seem shortsighted, but it reflects on from what I'm hearing in the community. The real solution is to fix the federal EAS rules so Dubuque can qualify for support. I know there are other communities across the country in the same position. We need to find them and build a coalition. Without the federal government, this will ultimately be a lost cause. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. Any other comments? Mr. Jones, you made the original motion. So if you'd care to make a further motion.
Yes, sir. Let me rescind that motion and replace it with this. The move that we receive and file and adopt the city manager's recommendation.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Farber to adopt the city manager's recommendation. Any further discussion? Okay, Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
No.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
That motion passes six to one.
Action item number two is International Property Maintenance Code, Ground Fault Circuit Interrupter Amendment Update.
Mr. Jones.
Sorry, wrong document. The move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting of which it is to be finally passed, is suspended.
Second by Wethel.
I got a motion by Jones, a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. In-term Housing and Community Development Director Sandy Fowler is recommending city council approval and ordinance amendment to the Property Maintenance Code modifying the Ground Fault Circuit Interrupter, or GFCI, requirements. On August 15, 2024, the Housing and Community Development Department submitted a request to amend the International Property Maintenance Code to align its GFCI requirements with the National Standard for the Physical Inspection of Real Estate, or INSPIRE. INSPIRE is the standard housing and urban development requires for inspection of assisted housing units, and with those amendments, the IPMC now mirrors INSPIRE. Following that ordinance change, additional INSPIRE guidance clarified that receptacles located inside cabinets are not required to be replaced with GFCI receptacles. In addition, based on feedback from inspectors and landlords, further updates were requested to, one, clarify the definition of water sources used in this code section; two, define GFCI requirements for laundry appliances; three, provide guidance for receptacles located behind refrigerators that are inaccessible. Because the state preempts GFCI requirements for 240-volt outlets, that clarification in the IPMC is also added. This update does not change the National Electrical Code requirements for new construction. Applies only to existing buildings. The intent of the original ordinance was to ensure that receptacle outlets within six feet of a sink, tub, or shower had GFCI protection. The original proposed code change was shared with the Dubuque Area Landlords Association. Their feedback prompted the addition of a clarification for receptacles located behind refrigerators. This proposal was taken to the Building Code Advisory and Appeals Board on September 12, 2025. The board unanimously supported the proposed change. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. One of the things I oh, go ahead, please.
I'd just like to add that once again, we had one of our boards, the Building Code Advisory and Appeals Board, that weighed in on this, and I really appreciate that because I'm not an electrician. I really don't know anything much about this topic, and I was glad that they and the landlords had input on this change.
Thank you. Any others? Yeah, I was just going to echo that. I think it speaks to some of the things that we've asked for to make sure that when we're looking at these, we're seeing feedback and just some input from the people who are going to be most affected by it, so I do appreciate that. Okay, well, the motion here is to receive and file and waive the three readings. So Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones, a second by Wethel. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero.
Next is action item number three, request for city council ratification of the Second Amendment of the Dubuque Police Protective Association, July 1, 2024, CBA.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file and approve the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. Chief Human Resources Officer Shelley Stickford is recommending city council ratify the Second Amendment to Dubuque Police Protective Association, DPPA, July 1, 2024, collective bargaining agreement. The purpose of the Second Amendment is to clarify when callback and court appearance witness fee supplemental pays are earned and how they may be taken. The union ratified this Second Amendment on September 26, 2025. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Seeing none. I'll just say then, thank you to the DPPA and Shelley Stickford for working through this, making sure the change was made. Okay, motion here is to receive and file and approve. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero.
Next is action item number four, Award of Construction Contract Water System Improvements, 2024, North English Road Water Main Extension Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Second by Wethel.
Motion by Russell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Water Department Director Chris Lester is recommending city council award the construction contract for the Water System Improvements, 2024 North English Road Water Main Extension Project to top-grade excavating, the amount of $1,487,135. The lump sum bid of $1,487,135 is 13% lower than the engineer's estimate of $1.7 million. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I noticed that it's receiving file and adopt the resolution was the I just didn't see the resolution in our attachment. Did I miss that? But is there are there any resolutions? Because the the motion was to receive and file and adopt the resolution. There is. Is there a resolution?
Actually, I don't see one on the agenda.
Well, it's on this one. It's not here. I mean, I noticed that there is one. It's just not included on our agenda, I guess.
Is that the case, Trish?
I'm confident that the yeah, I'm confident that the resolution is correct, but since we had that one incident where we voted on something and we didn't, and the resolution kind of was worded differently than we had anticipated, there were some issues.
In looking at the supporting materials, there is a resolution included from our bond counsel, Dorsey and Whitney, out of Des Moines. It's just not listed separately in the materials. It's included in the tab labeled letting, Construction Award Delegation Dubuque Number 26, 2025 V2. So there is the resolution contained in there. Unfortunately, we didn't get it separated out.
I also, we didn't fill in the numbers on the resolution itself. It's still in the in the format from the attorney.
The numbers are important, aren't they?
Right. Yeah, the numbers are in the memo, but they're not in the actual resolution, nor does the resolution have a number. So I think we have time to bring this back to the council before the bid.
Shall I move to table that? I'm just looking at the dates here. Give me a second.
Chris, you're on the phone, right?
Yes, Mike. Chris Lester, Water Department Director.
Do you know how long we have to do the bid award? Usually, we have 30 or 60 days to actually award the bid.
I want to say, Mike, it's about 40, 45 days. And with us considering bids on the previous council meeting, we are very close to the end of that window. We might be within a few days here, Mike.
So is there a way for you to calculate the exact days where so maybe we could have a special council meeting to actually have the completed resolution? Or maybe we could complete the resolution tonight before the end of the meeting?
Yes, I can get that done tonight, Mike.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think we can make that work. The I'm just looking at this resolution again here. So they've given the motion to approve, which is what has been done. No, no, that is separate. Sorry. I think there's a way that we can I can do this by the end of the meeting.
Yeah, maybe if we could delay it till the last action item tonight and see if we can complete the resolution by then.
Yeah. Do we need a motion specifically to do that? Or can we just?
I would just table it to be item 10. I think it's action item 10 tonight, or just move it to be action item 10 this evening.
Ms. Russell, would you care to make the motion?
I move to move item number four to be the last item on tonight's agenda.
Second by Wethel.
Does it specifically need to be to table that, just to make that?
No, it can just be to rearrange it.
Okay. All right, so let's take a vote on that, please, Trish, to move this from item four to item 10.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero.
Action item number five is Madison, Gay, and Jefferson Park Playground Replacements.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Spring.
A motion that we receive and file and approve.
Second.
Motion by Sprank and a second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director Matt Kelsovich is recommending approval of Madison, Gay, and Jefferson Park Playground Replacement Projects that are not currently included or do not have enough funding to complete the projects in fiscal year 2026 budget. Playgrounds have recently been placed at Avon Park and Waloo Park. Based on the replacement cost of those playground structures, including a poured-in-place rubber surfacing under the playground, is estimated to cost $194,000 to replace the playground at Madison Park. Estimated to cost $266,736 to replace the playground at Gay Park. Estimated to cost $230,000 to replace the playground at Jefferson Park. There is $175,742 funded in the fiscal year 2025 budget being requested to carry over as part of the fiscal year 2026 First Budget Amendment for playground replacements at Madison and Gay Parks. The additional funding needed of $514,994 for playground replacement projects would be provided from fiscal year 2025 general fund savings. The Madison, Gay, and Jefferson Playground Replacement Projects are included in the fiscal year 2026 First Budget Amendment that will be considered by city council at a future public hearing. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Spring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be appreciative to our Park and Rec Department, as well as our Financial Department, for helping us kind of figure out how to find some funds, particularly for the Gay Park area. That playground is it's in need of replacement, and I'll be looking forward to finding more funding next year in it, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Van Milligan, I know this new state guidelines, the budget guidelines, made big changes to our process. We're still working through this possibly, but do we have policy and procedures for unspent funds in one year? So I guess my question is, has this gone through the budget process?
Yeah, so the procedure is that we have what we call budget carryovers from one fiscal year to another. So those are for, let's say, uncompleted projects or unpurchased equipment. We have budget amendments, which are new things to a budget. And so there are two of those that happen each year. One, you set a public hearing tonight. Under set for public hearings at the next city council meeting. And then the other one will come in the spring. And so that's our standard practice is to bring to you two budget amendments during a during a fiscal year besides the budget process that you go through in April.
I know that these parks, these playgrounds have been in the plans, and we didn't plan to spend money, more money than what was budgeted. So I guess to answer my question, you're saying that really, we never have I never is a big word. We don't have we generally don't have unspent money. We we take the money that we had planned for other things and use it for the things that we didn't think we had money for, or how's that work?
No, I'm sorry. I probably didn't wasn't clear there. So by state law, we're not allowed to have a deficit budget. So we have never had one. So we budget adequate funds to do all the activities that the mayor and city council determine need to be done during a fiscal year. That includes paying for personnel, equipment, services, capital projects, and it's several hundred million dollars. But what happens during a fiscal year? You have position vacancies, so money that was budgeted wasn't spent for those vacancies. You have savings on equipment. You may buy a $500,000 piece of equipment that you budgeted for, and you might spend $400,000 on that equipment through the competitive bidding process. We had an example earlier tonight about a capital improvement project that we saved several hundred thousand dollars this fiscal year on. Well, we had several of those last year, where when we actually bid the capital project, they came in at much less than we had budgeted. Back to the idea of the competitive budgeting process. So what we do when we close out the fiscal year, so our fiscal year ended June 30th, when we close out the fiscal year, as I said before, we've never operated in a deficit. So we've never finished a fiscal year in a deficit. That's true again this year. So we're just talking about the general fund here. We had $4.7 million remaining in the general fund that we did not need to spend. We had $4.7 million remaining in the general fund that we did not need to spend last year for all those things I just described, personnel, services, equipment, and capital projects that were funded by the general fund. So now you have an opportunity to allocate those dollars for other activities. And that doesn't mean you have to allocate it all right now, this year, in this amendment. We have another amendment in April and in, I'm sorry, in the spring. In April, you'll have another budget process, which you can then allocate those funds through that budget process. Now, when you do that, I encourage you to try and allocate them for one-time expenditures and not continuing annual expenses, because it's a one-time revenue source, which is money left over from the previous fiscal year. And so those are the three touchpoints that you have during a fiscal year to deal with the money remaining at the end of the previous fiscal year, which in this case, in the general fund, is $4.7 million.
How does $4.7 million really, how does that compare with past years? Has the new budgeting situation that we got from the state, has that affected that number at all?
Yeah, actually, I I'm not prepared to answer that question. I don't know if our chief financial officer, Jennifer Larson, would be or not if if we looked at that question of.
It seems like when they say you can only raise the budget by a certain amount, and we have to pay all our bills, that we would have to consider, you know, make sure that we cover everything by by maybe perhaps giving generous generous consideration to the our bills coming up in the following year. But do you you would you be able to talk about or characterize this budget surplus compared to others?
Jennifer Larson, Chief Financial Officer. So on a fiscal year basis, the surplus varies. So it just depends. In some fiscal years, it's lower, 1.3 million, for example, and this year's was a little bit higher at 4.7 million, just based on, you know, as Mike explained, bidding and overall actual expenditures being less, and, you know, many vacancies, for example, in the police department. So it does fluctuate anywhere between like one little over a million to what we're seeing this year to 4.7 million.
So you say this is on the higher side?
On the higher side. But we do make sure we maintain the 25% general fund balance requirement. So that's taken care of prior to looking at surplus funds.
Okay, thank you very much. So we have talked about Madison, Gay, and Jefferson Park Playground Replacements, and we have partially funded them. So I consider that to be going through a budget process, and we were only able to fund it at a certain level. And I'll have for the next items, we'll talk about those as well. But thank you for that clarifications, those clarifications. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? And I think, too, another thing to point out in this and several other items that are coming up here is that one of the things that was interesting about this budget session that we had last time was we did get a lot of community feedback about parks in particular, which is a reason that we prioritize it again this year. But there were some very specific things, and they're the things that are actually listed here on this on the agenda tonight. So I think that that's one of the things that is unique about this year as well. And it's great that we have the opportunity to be able to do that with the the carryover funds that we do have from the budget. So, okay. Motion here is to receive and file and approve. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is Murphy Park Tennis Court Resurfacing in Playground Replacement.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones. I move to receive and file and approve.
Second by Barber.
Motion by Jones, second by Barber. Mike, please.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director Matt Kelsevich is recommending approval of Murphy Park Tennis Court Resurfacing and Playground Replacement Projects that are not currently included or do not have enough funding to complete the projects in the fiscal year 2026 budget. There are five tennis courts at Flora Park. Community members have expressed their interest in having the courts resurfaced. So I apologize, it looks like I mixed Murphy and the Flora Park memo together here. So let me try and see here. So, okay, that reference there obviously is the Flora Park Tennis Courts, which is not what we're talking about in this memo, but the Murphy Park Tennis Courts. So there is $123,929 funded in the fiscal year 2025 budget being requested to carry over as part of the fiscal year 2026 first budget amendment for a playground replacement at Murphy Park. The additional funding needed of $248,571 for Murphy Park Tennis Court Resurfacing and Playground Replacement Projects would be provided from the fiscal year 2025 general fund savings for a total cost of $372,500. The Murphy Park Tennis Court Resurfacing and Playground Replacement Projects are included in the fiscal year 2026 first budget amendment that will be considered by city council at a future public hearing. I concur with the recommendation in respect for the request, Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike.
Ms. Mayor?
Ms. Barber.
So as someone who used to teach on those courts, they probably are in the same condition as when I was a tennis instructor for the city, along with Flora. So I look forward to this budget resurfacing. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Oh, Ms. Resnick, sorry.
That's all right. So, Mr. Van Milligan, I guess for this one and the next couple, I just wonder, you know, we have a parks plan coming through, and I just want to know how, if if we have some information, Mr. Faisal, I haven't I haven't read it, I don't think we've been given the the plan, but does this figure in the plan? I know that the council has come together with goals and priorities and made this one of our top or high priorities. But as part of that plan, do they recommend that we resurface specifically for this item, the Murphy Park Tennis Court?
Yeah, I would suggest that the plan doesn't get into that granular, doesn't pick out individual things and say, you should resurface this, or you shouldn't resurface that. But I can tell you, there's no indication in any of the public input that we're getting that we should eliminate tennis courts from the park system, or that we should eliminate play units from the park system. So what we're talking about is keeping these up to a serviceable standard for the public to use, which is really more a maintenance function than a park planning, master planning function.
And as you mentioned, these are capital funds. They're they're being used as one-time expenditures.
Yes, sure.
And so that, you know, so I I understand the the use for that. I'm kind of surprised that the the parks plan doesn't include things like, well, there's, you know, baseball or pickleball, or whatever the sport is, is really up, maybe we should consider more of that. And some sports aren't as popular, and so maybe we maybe we should take the tennis court and maybe take half of them and turn them into pickleball. But that will be talked about later.
Well, that's a good point, and the plan will talk about those kinds of things. But for instance, a tennis court can be converted into a pickleball court. So it's not as if we've made an irrevocable decision if, and I'll make up a number, we have 15 tennis courts now and 10 pickleball courts, and they say, well, it should be the opposite. We you have not made an irrevocable decision that makes that not possible.
Well, thank you, and I'm glad they're going to make some some studied recommendations. I'm looking forward to those. Do you know when those might be available?
It'll be soon. I don't think we've have we scheduled yet, Steve, the work session with the council on the master plan? I can't remember if we have or not. No? No, but we're we're getting ready to do that.
Great.
Yes.
I'm sure the whole community is looking forward to that. Should be exciting and and give us some great information. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. Motion here is to receive and file and approve. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number seven is Flora Park Tennis Court Resurfacing.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Russell?
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second.
Russell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director Matt Kelsevich is recommending approval of Flora Park Tennis Court Resurfacing Projects that are not currently included in the fiscal year 2026 budget. There are five tennis courts at Flora Park. Community members have expressed their interest in having the tennis courts resurfaced. In 2024, Parks and Recreation staff contracted contracted out the resurfacing of the volleyball pickleball courts at Flora Park. The cost estimates to resurface resurface the tennis courts, including new poles and tents, is 150, I'm sorry, and nets, is $152,000. The additional funding needed of $152,000 for Flora Park Tennis Court Resurfacing Projects would be provided from fiscal year 2025 general fund savings. The Flora Park Tennis Court Resurfacing Projects are included in fiscal year 2026 first budget amendment that will be considered by city council at a future public hearing. I concur with the recommendation in respect for the request, Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody? Okay. Motion here is to receive and file and approve. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number eight is Eagle Point Park Projects.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Sprank.
Motion that we receive and file and approve.
Second.
Motion by Sprank, second by Barber. Mike, please.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director Matt Kelsevich is recommending approval of Eagle Point Park Projects that are not currently included in the fiscal year 2026 budget. A historic structures report was approved by city council at the April 21st, 2025 city council meeting. The report includes the Bridge Complex, Indian Room, and Veranda Rooms. The completed historic structures report provides the necessary information to pursue a challenge grant for bricks and mortar improvements in the future from the Jeffress Foundation. Their capital campaign challenge grant program provides additional funds for restoration for the structures of up to $1 million matching funds for bricks and mortar at a two-for-one or two two local dollars for one foundation dollar. Currently is anticipated that this would be a $500,000 grant application with $1 million in local match raised by a local nonprofit. The Jeffress Foundation does not allow the match to come from the city budget. The report provided an opinion on the costs related to work needed on these structures. High priority repairs and assessments were identified that should be addressed sooner rather than later. These include additional structural assessments needed for the existing conditions at the Veranda Rooms and Bridge Complex, and for historic materials analysis of stone, paint, and cementous floor coatings. Completing these assessments will provide cost estimates needed regarding specific existing conditions. This work is necessary to determine specific costs that would be used in the future grant application to Jeffress for renovation work. This is important, as it would potentially add costs to match the grant application. These assessments are estimated to cost $40,000. The roofs of the Veranda Room and the Terrace Room are cedar shake singles, shingles. The roofs have sustained storm damage from trees in recent months. The roofs have been patched but need to be replaced. They have been they have reached the end of their life cycle and are leaking. The estimated cost to replace the roof of the Terrace Room is $40,000. The estimated cost to replace the roof of the Veranda Rooms is $51,000. There is currently $57,000 in the fiscal year 2026 capital budget to renovate the Shyrus Memorial Pavilion. Park Division staff obtained an estimate for the repairs and renovation. The total cost for the project is estimated at $97,000. Funding is needed needed to hire a contractor to trim trees along the bluff and improve the views. City staff are unable to complete this type of work due to the complexity required. Once completed, the impact will be immediate. Additional trees need to be removed and trimmed and pruned throughout the entire park. This work is best completed in the fall/winter munch, which is the best time to trim or prune oak trees. Estimates to trim trees along the bluff and remove, trim, and prune trees throughout the park is $150,000. There are six tennis courts in the park. The courts need to be resurfaced, including new poles and nets. The work on the six tennis courts is estimated to cost $302,000. Fifteen dead trees have been removed from the park in 2025. Additional trees will be removed by the Park Division staff yet this calendar year, following the guidance to protect threatened and endangered bats. Two teenage groups completed work projects in the park. The Teen Resiliency Corps, led by Environmental Justice Tree Coordinator Llorana Snyder, and a teen group, served Dubuque, led by Sarah Burna, AmeriCorps Program Director, completed three workdays in the park. Some work included removing invasive plants from prairie areas and woodland edges. Other work included general park cleanup of leaves, weeds, and debris. One additional special project included placing tree tubes around 100 white oak saplings to protect them and preserve them for future transplanting throughout the park. During the last week of October 2025, the Park Division will partner with the Public Works Department to complete maintenance projects in the park. Projects will include sidewalk repairs, asphalt repairs, cracked ceiling, and down tree limb removal. The Community Impact Department will also be involved, engaging volunteer groups to target specific tasks such as leaf, weed, and litter removal. There is $57,000 included in the fiscal year 2026 budget to renovate the Shyrus Memorial Pavilion, which would be reallocated to the roof. The additional funding needed of $623,000 in funding for Eagle Point Park Projects would be provided from fiscal year 2025 general fund savings. Eagle Point Park Projects are included in the fiscal year 2026 first budget amendment that will be considered by city council at a future public hearing. I concur with the recommendation in respect for the request, Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion? Mr. Sprank?
Thank you. I know at goal setting, I had was very, I advocated very much for us to start doing some work up there, and trees was in particular. So I'm glad that that's going to be moving forward. So thank you to our park staff and our public works group. So look forward to seeing more work happening up there. So I'm sure the citizens will be happy as well. Thank you.
Any others?
Ms. Barber? Just a shout out for the trifecta of the tennis courts. I appreciate that all three parks will be resurfaced. Thank you.
Ms. Russell, sorry.
I'd just like to add that I think all these projects are going to make a big difference for the park appearance and the amenities. And we all know that park is enjoyed by residents and visitors alike, and it's a great response to the concerns that we've heard from our residents, just another way that we've taken the opportunity to listen to what people have to say and take some action. So I'm looking forward to seeing this completed.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Any others? All right. Motion is to receive and file and approve. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next action item is Police Space and Facility Study.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Jones? I move to receive and file and approve.
Second.
Jones, second by Wethel. Mike?
Thank you. First of all, I would like to acknowledge that I probably put in, should have put in the subject line, Police and Fire Administration Space and Feasibility Study. And as I read this, you'll hear why I say that. Police Chief Jeremy Jensen is recommending the approval of a police department space and feasibility study project that is not currently included in the fiscal year 2026 budget. This this has been established as a city council priority. The Dubuque Police Department presently occupies a building owned by Dubuque County, which is shared with the Dubuque County Sheriff's Department. Since 1974, the police department has experienced significant growth in staff numbers and technology requirements. The most affected areas include the patrol work area, which has only four work stations for 50 officers, and the locker room space, particularly for women. The newly implemented Precision Policing Center was also designed without room for growth due to the limited existing space. Sheriff Kennedy wishes to maintain the partnership and sharing of the space with the Dubuque Police Department, but recognizes that the police department is out Police Department, but recognizes that the police department has outgrown the current facilities. Additionally, the 1974 building is outdated. Similarly, the fire department has outgrown its administrative space at fire headquarters, and there might be an opportunity for the police and fire departments to share administrative offices. Based on the space study conducted by Johnson County and Iowa City, an additional $100,000 is needed for the police space and feasibility study project, and as I said, in fire administration. This funding would be provided from the fiscal year 2025 general fund savings. The police and fire administration space and feasibility study project is included in the first budget amendment for fiscal year 2026, which will be considered by the city council at a future public hearing. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Excellent. Thanks, Mike. I really appreciate that this is brought to us so quickly after the goal setting, because this is a newer subject. We haven't really talked that much about this subject until we got to goal setting this year, so I really appreciate that we've been able to do this so quickly. I do have a time question, though, and it's either for you or for Chief, as far as how when we can expect this one to start moving forward. I did see on the memo that you wrote, Chief, that it's a three-to-four month process of conducting the study, probably, is what your estimation is, but I'm just curious what we can expect in the months ahead.
Jeremy Jensen, Chief of Police, tomorrow?
Yeah, right. Yeah.
So ideally, yeah, to move it fairly quickly so we can get other budget recommendations before you, before the next budget. So when I say tomorrow, upon approval, we'll start working on that right away and getting the RFPs out to see who can do this for us. Our goal is the three-to-four month. We took that off of a conference we went to last year, said that's generally what it takes on that, but to get them on site and see what we have for that. But that's our ultimate goal, moving it fairly quickly.
Great. So we should expect to see some stuff here in the next few council meetings after, I mean, we got a budget hearing we have to pass, obviously, but yeah, okay, great. That's good news. Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Resnick.
Yes, thanks, Chief. If you could add just one more thing. I noticed that you checked with a couple of other departments, and so you think $100,000 is an outside estimate. That sounds like Johnson County had a $100,000 estimate, and one of the cities had much less, but you'll find out, right?
Yes, and I purposely picked the higher amount so we didn't end up with, like, you know, let's say I ask for $20,000, they say it's $50,000, you get $20,000 worth of business. So looked at what they budgeted for, it looked like they got a study for what they budgeted for, so I used that as the dollar amount.
All right. Thank you. I was just suggesting that you talk to the Iowa City people instead, but.
And we will, and that's unique. I mean, they were looking at a joint building on that, too, that had a jail and all kinds of other stuff, so I truly don't anticipate it'll be that high, but I also don't want it to short it, and we sense they get, and tell us what we already know.
A bit facetious, but I do wonder, where do you get the list of the people, the firms that do this type of thing?
It's interesting, because there's, looking at through the Iowa chiefs, and there's a number of new buildings, particularly around the Des Moines Metro area, and there's a number of consultants that do this. And it looks like Johnson County and Iowa City both had different consultants initially, and then looking at what Des Moines Metro, there's a couple of different consultants, at least in the state of Iowa, and obviously, they're not in the same area we are, so there might be even more than that going to the east.
Well, I appreciate the last time we were there, which was recently, the council was there. You know, the facilities, there's a lot packed in there, and some of those rooms, the spaces are small, you have to leave the room to change your mind even. So, I mean, it's one of those situations. I get it. There's a lot of people using that, and a lot more equipment is needed, and we have just a highly skilled, highly tuned police force and fire department that could use, you know, they need space, and I'm glad we're getting an educated view on this. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any others before Chief tries to run away again?
I ran back.
I think we're good. Thank you very much, Chief. We appreciate the time. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file and approve. Trish, what do you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
The next action item is Public Works Building Improvements and Asphalt Paving Replacement.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Russell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Public Works Director Ariel Swift is recommending the approval of Public Works Building Improvements at the Municipal Service Center and an asphalt pavement replacement project that are not currently included or do not have enough funding to complete the projects in the fiscal year 2026 budget. The Municipal Service Center Building Improvements include the replacement of the rooftop HVAC units. The estimated cost for the rooftop HVAC units is $600,000. The Municipal Service Center roof is in need of replacement. The fiscal year 2026 budget includes $94,500 of funding. The additional estimated cost is $853,620. The Public Works Department asphalt paving machine is in need of replacement to maintain the aggressive annual street overlay program. The estimated cost of replacement is $600,000. This $2,53,620 in funding would be provided from the fiscal year 2025 road use tax fund savings. Public Works Building Improvements and Asphalt Paving Replacement Projects is included in the first budget amendment for fiscal year 2026, which will be considered by the city council at a future public hearing. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. So many years ago, we voted to put solar panels on that roof, and I voted against that because I thought there might be some damage to the roof from these panels, and that it might be expensive later. Do we know if the solar panels on the roof had anything to do with this needing replacement?
Well, Acting Public Works Director Brian Wolfcall is in the audience, and I guess if he can answer that question. I have no reason to believe that's the case, but I might not know all the information.
Brian Wolfcall, Acting Public Works Director. We're starting on the phase of getting studies, and they don't think as of right now that the solar panels had anything to do with the roof replacement. We reached out to some engineering firms, and they just said the roof that we put on was just a little bit at the time, and they don't even put that style of roof on anymore. So the solar panels probably will have an extra cost because you have to take them down, you know, to put a new roof on, but as for the leaks on the roof, that had nothing to do with the leaks on it.
Okay, so they haven't determined that yet, is what you're saying. But, I mean, they did screw into the roof, these panels, right? And to say that, we're not, I mean, you can't say that they didn't, but they're looking into it.
Correct.
Yeah, I hope not. Are we planning to put them back up?
I am not sure.
I think the answer to that is yes.
And the same panels? Because those are old technology. Anyway, I would love.
If they have useful life left, it would be the same panels, and I think they are 20 years' useful life. I don't think they've been up there 20 years, but.
I just wouldn't want to spend $600,000 and have the same issue happen again, but so I'm sure that's going to be looked at, especially considering the solar panels, especially since there are options to put panels other places. But anyway, so it wasn't determined what it is, and we intend to put them up there. That's, I guess that's my issue, because I know people with panels, and they thought they were doing the right thing, but they had to put a new roof up, and there was damage in their homes. You know, it's not this situation, so I don't know, you know, the ins and outs of the situation. But I wasn't surprised to see that we need to replace the roof, and maybe, it was only, it was like 12 years ago, and so, I mean, do roofs only last 12 years?
Well, I don't think we put a new roof on 12 years ago. This is the original roof from the building, isn't it?
Yes.
Do you remember when the new building was built?
Twenty years ago.
Yeah, to get a new roof after 20 years is not, I don't think it's, I mean, we got a roof expert here.
Yeah, I can comment whenever.
Okay, yeah. We'll let you jump in after Mr. Resnick.
Thank you very much for your answers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if the roof is almost 20 years old, it's about at the end of its life expectancy, and generally, those panels that were installed in that timeframe, they kind of just rest on the roof, or it might be on a frame. I'm not knowing what type of, how they're installed. It could have possibly rubbed little holes in the roof, but not knowing, we don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay. Well, the motion here is to receive and file and approve. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next action item is Award of Construction Contract Water System Improvement, 2024 North English Road Water Main Extension Project that was moved previously in tonight's agenda.
Okay, so.
You want to motion first?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
It's all right.
Okay, so I move to receive and file and approve if, well, can I add?
Well, it'd be adopt the resolution in this case, right?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, and adopt the resolution if we have it now.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Russell, second by Wethel. Cranny.
Okay, so the blank resolution was in the packet. What Trish had, the city clerk's office had prepared already, did in fact have the resolution number on it, which was going to be Resolution 32725, so already numbered. The blanks were not filled in, so what you can see on your screens now, and that Randy is making sure it's broadcast for public consumption, is that Top Grade Excavating Incorporated out of Farley, Iowa, is listed as the name and address of the contractor, and the amount of the bid is in the amount of the $1,487,135, which was the bid and corresponds to both the information contained in the memo and the information contained in like the bid tab and all of the documents and things like that that were attached. So it simply incorporates that typed into the resolution, which you are being asked to approve this evening.
So just to clarify, the information that we received in the packet was all correct and accurate?
Yes.
We just simply didn't have the completed resolution before us to be able to make that?
It was simply missing those two pieces from being filled out. Yes.
Okay, all right. And I do want to ask, I mean, based on, we haven't done this before, where we had to come back and do this, at least in my time, in this role, it's entirely legal for us to move forward with this in this way?
Yes, all of the other processes, notifications, things of that nature, all followed in accordance with the law. This is essentially what, in my world, we would call a Scrivener's error, essentially meaning it was a typo. We just neglected it. Does not change any of the legal substance or process.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay. And thank you to Mr. Resnick for noticing the Scrivener's error in this case. Okay. All right. Any further questions on this? All right, then. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next on the agenda are council member reports.
All right. Report away.
Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Barber.
So I'll start. Mentioned before, just a shout out to the university. We had our board meeting last week, as well as the homecoming, and what was most interesting, of course, was the announcement for Mr. Clapperton and his wife of the Innovation Center, which will be the new Engineering and Innovation Department at the University of Dubuque. And of course, then it was followed by the inauguration of President Frampton, and of course, the mayor was there as well, who is the 12th president of the University of Dubuque since its opening. And it was just really quite monumental, and talking about momentum, they also started out their momentum campaign for the fundraising for their, to culminate, if you will, in next year's celebration of 175 years in operation. Also wanted to give a shout out to Bluff Strokes. They had their culmination of the week last weekend and had all the exhibit of all the artists, and what was just unique about this year is that there were over 50 artists, and the weather was so accommodating, and it was just a pleasure to see the artists all throughout the city taking the time to paint our establishments, as well as the landscape around the city. And then the third shout out was to the Symphony Orchestra, who had a fabulous concert this weekend, fully attended and greatly appreciated with the artists that they had this time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since, of course, the last time we met, we've had a number of things. We all had goal setting, which was fun. Then I virtually called into my DRA board meeting. I attended a Dubuque Federation of Labor meeting, and then also, we did, I chatted with the TH, and then also, I stopped by and purchased a lovely piece of art at the Bluff Strokes Art Festival. I always find nocturnals, but they didn't have one this year, so I bought just a nice little picture of my neighborhood. And then, of course, the Holy Trinity had a lovely chili cook-off when it was 80 degrees outside, so not the best time, but it was still good, still a good day. So otherwise, just I'll be out and about these next couple of weeks, just talking to folks, and plenty of events that I'll be at, too. So thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Russell.
Thanks. Well, I took the opportunity to go down to the Community Foundation and visit with Alex Baum to review this year's Day to Walk information, because I had missed the original event. Our church had another hunger outreach in downtown Dubuque, served 188 families, and that's nearly 500 people. I visited with the Hawkeye Community Action Agency Leadership Team. I've served on the board there for many years, and I've been elected to serve as treasurer. And Dubuque Trees Forever had a booth at the Lincoln School Carnival, and we were able to talk to area families about our neighborhood orchard. So, thank you.
Love the Lincoln School Carnival. It was always one of my favorites.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Well, after we left here, the next day, on Tuesday, the 16th, we had a travel Dubuque meeting. On the 17th, I went to the Rising Stars Breakfast and got to see Anthony get his award. It was an awesome event, some awesome rising stars, and appreciate the Telegraph Herald for pointing that out to all of us, that there's people doing some things in this community that really matter. Later that day, we had our Solid Waste Agency meeting. Thursday, the 18th, I went to the Cleveland Park Neighborhood Gathering. Glad to see another of the newer neighborhood associations are really taking root, people participating. Saturday, the 20th, I went down to the Multicultural Family Center and helped Mike Van Milligan and others kind of set up for the BBQ and DBQ. Then that evening was a pretty neat event. The Sisters of the Presentation invited several of us to the Lightbearers Celebration. They were talking about their mission and just celebrating people in the community that are advancing their mission through the things that they're doing and that we're doing, frankly. That's kind of how we got invited there. Danny mentioned, we spent almost all of the next week in goal setting, but besides that, we had a DRA board meeting on the 23rd. I went to the Scale Matters presentation that Dubuque Forward put forward at Voices on the 24th. It was excellent. We mostly agreed with the things that he said, and he mostly agreed with the things that we're doing, although he's holding out for two-way streets in Central White. That ship has sailed. Went to the State of the City presentation on Friday, the 26th. He did a great job, again, Mayor. Took a ride out to Piastor that afternoon for ribbon cutting. NICC has a new athletics center, and they've got teams, and they've got just boatloads of kids in softball t-shirts and baseball t-shirts and cross-country t-shirts, and really
baseball t-shirts, and cross-country t-shirts, and really happening thing. And it was a very, very happy event, and a lot going on there. Saturday, the 27th, our East Dubuque Drum Corps was supposed to go do a parade in Illinois somewhere, and it got canceled. So I called Main Street and said, hey, you want a drum corps to come down and make some noise at Farmers Market? So we did, and we entertained some people for about an hour and a half, and it was a ton of fun. Then Tuesday, the 30th, a bunch of us were at the ribbon cutting at Eagle Valley Park. And neat little neighborhood park tucked into the backyards, between the backyards and the bluff, and just a very feel-good event to see that beautiful little recreation area, you know, within steps of most people's backyards in the subdivision. Then last week, I did too much, went and enjoyed Door County for a few days, although two of those days I suspect pouring over council agendas. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sounds like a regular vacation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ms. Wethel?
So the Lightbearers Dinner, I just have to say, I left there feeling incredibly uplifted and hopeful. And I find when I spend time with people who work in service and are committed to it, that's how you feel when you leave those kind of people. It was wonderful, so I'm very grateful for that experience. And then on October 2nd, I did a ride along with our Critical Incident Team with the Dubuque Police Department. Really great experience, met with them, learned more about the day-to-day workings of what they do. Additionally, went down to the jail, had a tour, met with kind of all levels of corrections, and really learned a lot. So listened to people who are on the front lines doing the work, and I'm incredibly grateful for them.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Resnick?
Yes, as part of my service, the City of Dubuque, I'm on the Four Mounds Board, and then as such, I visited and attended their volunteer luncheon. And while I was there, besides eating some good food, I did, on your behalf, Mr. Mayor and the council, give them our thanks for all the great work they do as volunteers. We have so many great volunteers in this community, whether it be for the trees, or for the arboretum, or for so many other activities. And so we have some great volunteers out at Four Mounds. And I also passed on our appreciation of their mission, which has greatly expanded, and they're doing so well. So that was one thing. And I do want to talk about, just briefly, our goals and priorities. We spent three days. And a special shout out to our facilitator, Lyle Sumek, who was lead, and the extensive collaboration that we had with city staff, especially our high-achieving assistant manager, city manager Cory Burbach. So thank you very much for putting this, you know, so much had to go into this decision-making. In order to make good decisions, we had to have good data, as you say, Mr. Mayor. And the city was able to, city staff, especially with Assistant City Manager Cory Burbach leading the way, gave us some great information, so we can make some good decisions. Thank you.
Good shout out. Well, I have just three quick things. First, we broke around on the Fox Hills Apartments last week, which is a great event to go to. That's going to be a really, really great place for people to live, so excited to get that moving. Got to meet some of the folks who are helping to run the organization, and it was, they're very, very excited to get that one going. I did attend the Iowa League of Cities Conference, finished out my time as president of the league, so now I'm the immediate past president. And I just want to make sure I say once again how thankful I am that we've gotten more involved in the Iowa League work as a council. I think it's very much a wonderful organization to be able to collaborate with people from across the state, and there's a lot of good things happening in Iowa, there really are, on the local level, so that was great. And then finally, just the inauguration of President Frampton. You know, it strikes me that it is so unique to have two separate presidential inaugurations for two of our colleges in the same fall. And I'm going to be attending for President Mike Doyle and Loris here in a couple of weeks, and I had never been to a college presidential inauguration before. And it was, it was a moving event. It really was. There were so many wonderful things said, not just about President Frampton, but also about the University of Dubuque, and about Dubuque in general. It was, it was, it's great to have this kind of energy and new leadership in those ways.
If I could add to that, it's really interesting, because the tradition was brought forth. The history of the University of Dubuque, there's only been 12 presidents in 175 years, so think about that. And then number two, it was the fact of the way it was done. You have all of the instructors process. Everybody came on stage with their gowns, no caps, but the gowns. It was a transition from Dr. Bullock to Dr. Frampton in terms of the wonderful medallion that that president keeps and wears with honor at certain occasions. And then it was just the, I thought, the statements from everybody up there, including yourself, were just so unique and so special, depending upon where they were speaking from. And the fact that there were many of the Presbyterian Colleges represented, there were the students, there were the administration, it was the faculty and staff, it was the city, et cetera. I mean, it was really well received. And then, can I tell them about the special guests that arrived?
Sure, why not?
All right, so they had a Field of Dreams theme, and so Shoeless Joe arrived onstage. And he happens to be Dennis Wismar, happens to be the uncle of Scott Wisma, who happens to be the vice president for the advancement now for the University of Dubuque. And Dennis is also the voice of the Spartans. So he really has a longstanding relationship, not only with the UD, but also, as you know, Mike, with the Ghost Players. And so he was there in full attire, and he came out not once, but twice, in terms of where are we now? And then the response from the university students was, this is not Iowa, this is the University of Dubuque. So it was really a nice, I think, event, and I think everybody was just very touched and just very appreciative of the opportunity to share this experience, because it does not come around that frequently here in Dubuque.
No.
And thank you for your presentation, because it was delightful and fun, and then it kind of tied into the momentum of the other speakers.
Yeah. Lots of momentum right now, that's for sure. All right, Mr. Jones?
In your inboxes is a message from Mike that transmits a message from the City of Dyersville, this council met tonight and endorsed a resolution that, according to the resolved by the city council, the City of Dyersville, Iowa. The Dyersville City Council fully supports City Dubuque's ongoing efforts to retain and expand commercial air service at the Dubuque Regional Airport. The Dyersville City Council authorizes the mayor and city administrator to work with the City of Dubuque and other regional partners, and the screen goes dark, to... There it goes. To work with the City of Dubuque and other regional partners to promote and aid these efforts.
Oh, nice.
Good stuff, and certainly attaches well to our other conversations today.
Absolutely. Thanks for reporting that, Mr. Jones.
Your friends in Dyersville.
Yeah. All right, well, we are going to take this momentum right into a closed session, so take the motion. Mr. Jones?
I move that the city council go into closed session in accordance with Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa, to discuss pending litigation and potential purchase or sale of real estate.
Second. Got a motion by Jones, second by Rousseau. For the record, the attorney the city council will consult with and the issues to be discussed in closed session is City Attorney Kavanaugh Brumwell. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Rousseau?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Passes seven zero. We are in closed session.[1779.63]